Okay, this time we'd like to call the meeting to order. Now, would everyone please rise, please? At this time, out of respect for the victims of the Sandy Hook shooting, a tragedy, I'd like everyone to bow your heads in a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and I'm sure all of our hearts go out to the victims and their families, and I'm gonna take this opportunity to read their names. I think it's important. Charlotte Bacon, Daniel Barton, Rachel Davino, Olivia Engel, Josephine Gay, Anna Marquez Green, Dylan Hockley, Don Hoxburn, Madeline Sue, Catherine Hubbard, Chase Kowalski, Jesse Lewis, James Manaloni, Grace McDonald, Ann Murphy, Emily Parker, Jack Pinto, Noah Posner, Carolyn Pravidi, Jessica Rickos, Avilene Richmond, Laura Russo, Mary Sherlock, Victoria Soto, Benjamin Wheeler, and Allison Wyatt, as well as Nancy Lanza. Thank you, everybody, and I'm sure all of you will, in your own way, send out your prayers and thoughts to all of them. Is Pastor Anderson here at this time? All right, thank you. Steve?
I would if you'd just join us in silent prayer of this city council, thanking the city we love and the troops for protecting our liberties. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. And this time we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Councilman Slakka.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Real call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longcard.
Here.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor.
All right, and we'll go to public comment on agenda items. Agenda items only, please. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Deb McLean, and I'm the publisher of The Banana Peel, and I'm here to speak about the DRGR and your push to develop it. I believe the DRGR should be returned to its natural state. I understand that it is damaged. I do not believe that we should go forward with as high a density as is being proposed, and I would like to suggest that we have our priorities at City Hall just a tiny out of whack. We have something, a gaping, tragic, horrific hole in our infrastructure. We do not have one full-service area, our entire city boundaries, that provides dark fiber, which is the black pipe, which is broadband. We have 1.2 million dollars, or million square feet, of vacant commercial space, and now I know why we are having difficulty filling it, because we have our priorities wrong. We should not be giving the EDC, Economic Development Council, money before we have our infrastructure in place. We can't lease these buildings and help these owners who have been paying property taxes for years, because we do not provide them the infrastructure to conduct business in today's technological world. The other issue is, I have been trying to clean up Old 41 since I came here in 1978 from Naples in 1956. Old 41, the road itself, today I saw some light. This roundabout concept that's on the projection board over there, I would like to see a roundabout at Rosemary in Old 41, which would demolish, of course, Buffalo chips, but maybe that time has come and that little convenience store. I would like to see it at Terry in Old 41, which would clean up some very sour ground under Tisha's laundromat, because they can't sell the land because it's contaminated. I would like to see it at Benita Beach Road in Old 41, and what a wonderful gateway slowing traffic to our downtown areas. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time who wish to speak on any agenda item, please come forward.
Morning, Council. James Daddie, Bynson, and King P L L C, on behalf of Berry Recycling. I'm here to speak to you this morning about Agenda Item 8, which would propose amendments to the Land Development Code within the city. I had appeared before you on the first reading of this ordinance. In the interim, I had sent a letter to Mr. Dahmer, a letter dated December 14, which I asked to be included as part of the public record. I represent Berry Recycling. Berry Recycling operates a solid waste transfer station located within the city limits. My earlier letter to you of December 11 had laid out the safety concerns that were inherent with the operation of such types of facilities. In my latest letter of the 14th of December, I had set out what I believe to be infirmities with the language of the proposed ordinance as it respects Sections 4, 6, 5, 3, which relates to use regulations for agricultural districts, and also Section 4, 1831, which allows developments and exceptions. The ordinance is going to run counter to other provisions of the Land Development Code if it is adopted in its present form. It runs counter to provisions of Chapter 3, which deal with development generally within the city. The proposed amendment to the, and this ordinance, and the amendments to the Land Development Code uses phrases as if they were terms of art without defining them. We're dealing with solid waste. Whether you call it vegetation, whether it's the garbage that comes from each of our homes, it's solid waste. And this proposed language mixes concepts that the state has, for years, developed through its regulations and laws with respect to environmental, the environmental damage and harm that can come from the disposal, the processing, the transportation of waste. The ordinance seemingly blends the concepts of transfer station, although it doesn't use that term, it's a defined term of art, and it mixes the concepts of shredding and composting and combines these activities and would allow them to proceed by special exception under Chapter 4. Well, that runs counter to other provisions, as I've said, of Chapter 3. My letter to you of the 14th lays out, in I think fairly good detail, as to the infirmities. We would request that you strike these, the language as respects these two sections, 4, 6, 5, 3, and 4, 1831, from the proposed amendment. I know there are other issues that need to be considered in this ordinance. My client doesn't have a position with respect to those, but with respect to these items, we'd ask that they be removed from the proposed amendment and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes. Wanted to speak a minute about the DRGR. I know that there are proposals, and very good proposals, being worked on to do something with the DRGR other than leaving it as it is. I would say this, that the biggest, most critical problem with the DRGR is not the roads, not planning, it's the storm water flow into that area. What should be done is, if you're gonna study the DRGR some more, and there's been a lot of money spent on it, that needs to be really looked at, and it needs to be the contract that South Florida Water Management had, I believe it was 2010, it might have been, started in '09. They studied South Lee County, starting up in Lehigh Acres, coming down Estero, east of Village Walk, to look at what happens with storm water flow in this area. The water that we have in the DRGR comes from a lot of other areas and the rain that falls on it. In fact, if you have a one-inch intense rainfall, and you drive down Benita Grande or Terry Street and look to the left and the right, you're gonna see not an inch of water, but three or four inches, and the water stays there for a week or so, which means there's water continuing to flow in there long after that water, the rain stops. If we don't get that part right, it will screw things up in Benita Springs for years. You'll never get it straightened out, because that water that's there now will go some other place. It's not just the amount of water that falls on that land. I would say that probably the DRGR is a unique tract of land, much different than any other part of Benita Springs, and another reason we want to do this right, if we do anything, is that the landowners in Lee County DRGR that abut Benita Springs will want to have discussions with you to annex in, so they can get out from under the monkey on their back with Lee County's requirements of DRGR. So I would urge that if you do anything, the very first step is, it's really gotta be looked at on the storm water, not the planning. We already know stuff about the roads. Roads will get taken care of. You build a lot of homes in there. Even if the developers didn't pay for it, it will get done. We'll all pay for it, but the water is a big thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item.
Don Konsekowski. First, I want to thank Councilwoman McIntosh for recommending at the last meeting to, for her staff to set up a meeting with some of the residents, just to discuss some of our concerns, and I appreciate everybody else agreeing with that meeting. I just have a couple of concerns that I want to mention now that we didn't get to yesterday. Section 4, 204, that's under your Agenda Item 8B, Submittal Requirements for Administrative Action Application, number six on that, on premises consumption of alcoholic beverages. I would suggest it require the applicant to show all properties within 500 feet. This restriction should not be less than what's required for a special exception application for consumption on premises. So I just thought, because in this proposal, they just have to show the perimeter of the property. And the other item was 4-3105 Use Permit. Right now, it states a use permit verifies the use in accordance with the Land Development Code. I would also ask that if a business is operating without a use permit, and you're gonna give them a use permit before administratively issuing it, if the development order, if they would check with the, and see what the development order that's filed with the Lee County Clerk of the Court should be verified for what the property was officially approved for, the use it was approved for, that's filed under, in Lee County Court, under development orders. And I'll touch on this later, but we ask that the council consider offering all affected and aggrieved persons the same administrative remedies that you are proposing to only offer an applicant in an administrative decision. An affected and aggrieved resident should be provided an administrative remedy at, before council, to correct an error by the Community Development Department that may affect them before having to spend dollars in court. We ask for equal protection under the code. An administrative error can have a negative effect on more than just the applicant. Exhaustion should be required to give the municipality a chance to correct its own errors. This means that the agency should be able to alter its own unwise decision through administrative appeals, or rehearing, or reconsideration, or review by council of that error. Letting a municipality correct its own errors offers several advantages. First, it promotes public faith in the city. People will trust the city more if they see that it reaches correct decisions on its own. This is good in itself if we believe that people should trust their government. It is also good because it'll lead people to rely on cheaper administrative rather than more expensive judicial procedures to try and correct administrative errors. If the aggrieved and affected people less frequently seek judicial review of administrative errors, the government, the affected persons, and the taxpayer will save. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Council, Nigel Fulick, resident, business owner, and if I may pass seats to the council.
Sure.
You want to go ahead and give them to the clerk?
This morning, what I came to talk to you about was the fact that the Art in Public Places Board had gotten together, and we have what we think is a great opportunity. People talk about the city of Benita Springs going to the dogs. Well, we think this might be an opportunity for us to show it, it's a good thing.
Or the chickens.
Or the chickens. We don't have any statues of chickens, Councilman Simmons, but we'll work on that. What we have is an opportunity, the city of Orlando currently is showing the Big Dog exhibit up there, and we know that it costs them in excess of $20,000. And the artist is someone who's pretty well-known to us, Mr. Dale Rogers, who's the one that gave us away, the statue, the sculpture that sits outside of the Lyles Hotel. We've got a relationship with this artist, and what we didn't realize is that he's becoming nationally famous. This exhibit's now been shown in at least six major cities around the country, and of course, with a price tag of $20,000, that's something that we wouldn't even consider. However, it's in Orlando currently, it's going to be there until March, and we talked to Mr. Rogers and asked him where the exhibit was going from there, and one of our nefarious schemes was, well, if it's going to be two or three months, it would cost you a lot of money to take it back to Massachusetts. Why don't you store that exhibit in Benita Springs? He realizes what we're up to, also understands that we have budgetary constriction, so we came down to a price of $12,000. In that $12,000, it includes, if you'll look, you'll see one of the eight-foot Big Dogs, that we would actually be keeping one of those sculptures permanently, not on lease, but actually as a gift to the city.
Did you say not on leash?
Not on leash, thank you. That was very good, Mr. Mayor. You're pretty sharp this morning.
No.
What we would do is, we want to honor our budget, which is $10,000. So we're asking council, if you will give us $10,000 to pay for the exhibit, and then what we're going to do is lease the statue back. This is a proposal that we're making to the artist, that we would lease the statue back for one year for the cost of $1, with the opportunity to purchase the statue for $2,000. So you're gonna say, where's the other $2,000 coming from? They've done a number of exhibits where they've gotten other cities involved, they've gotten the Humane Society, SPCA, a lot of these, as fundraisers to work with these organizations. So we feel that we can easily raise that $2,000. And I've thought about this, so I'm here this morning to also tell you that I am willing to personally pledge $500 towards the purchase of that statue. So what I'm asking you to take is a flyer on your Art in Public Places Board, which is unanimously supporting this project, to bring something of national significance to the city of Benita for a period of at least two months, as long as possibly four months. With there being 15, you only see six there, there's actually 15 dogs that'll be here. We had a great, I think it was our city attorney was talking about the fact that we have a number of parks in the city, and with the new park off of the Imperial River and Tamiami Trail, that that might be a great way to bring attention to that. So there's a lot of exciting things that we can do with it. What we're asking is your support in voting this afternoon, this morning, for the $10,000 and the $1 lease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and carry on here. Okay. Carl, today we have, under Proclamations and Presentations, we have presentation for our alternate street design on roundabouts, and this gentleman was kind enough, how you doing? Was kind enough, Michael?
Thank you.
Michael Walworth, is that his?
Yeah.
He was kind enough to give a presentation at the MPO, and it was really impressive, and I thought that council would really enjoy this, so carry on.
Okay, thank you very much. My name's Michael Walworth, and as you noticed, I've got a bit of an accent, and that's because I'm from Melbourne, Australia. And I've been here for 24 years, and I still haven't lost it.
No worries.
No worries. Great. Okay, now, this is a roundabout that was completed recently for the city of Sarasota, and it is in downtown, and it is the gateway to their main street, as you come off US 41. That's at Main Street and Pineapple.
Just a little bit south of St. Armans, well, I mean, it's kind of down.
It's probably a couple of miles. St. Armans Circle is out on the island, this is on the mainland, right, in the downtown area of the city of Sarasota. And, you know, they had traffic signals there, and it was a real mess, and the pedestrians used to walk against the red lights, because they couldn't wait for the signals to cycle. So we put in a roundabout, and the council wanted to make it a showpiece, so they put a little bit extra money into the landscaping, and they've got a really great roundabout now. And the big benefit of this roundabout to the city is, now the pedestrians don't have to wait for the cars, or the traffic lights. The cars now have to wait for the pedestrians. So it's really improved pedestrian mobility in the downtown area, which is, you know, one of the goals of the city. For me, I recently started designing signals, you know, 37 years ago, so I've designed a lot of traffic signals, and no matter how well I designed them, I couldn't stop people killing each other, I couldn't get rid of the traffic queues, and so we decided, well, let's try a roundabout. And that was my first roundabout, the first ever in Australia, we designed it from a photo, and it worked. So we started to do more, and Melbourne's probably got more than 4,000 roundabouts now. So in Florida, that was my first one in the U.S., and that was in Gainesville, and it was just a, you know, local street roundabout. This is the, the major one is in Clearwater Beach, Florida, where we took an eight-lane road and made it into a four-lane boulevard, and pulled out three traffic lights and put in one roundabout. So, you know, you can go from the low end with just a roundabout in the local street system, up to a major roundabout on a state highway and reduce the number of lanes. This is in Cape Coral, which I did about, I think it was about 12 years ago now, and this is a recent one in Sarasota County, where we put in a, built a three-lane roundabout, but because of the concerns and the volume wasn't there, we are now operating as a two-lane roundabout, and as the volumes increase, we'll convert it to a three-lane roundabout. That, that's been on the ground for about 16 months now, and it's been operating very well. So one of the big questions comes up about roundabouts, oh, they're pulling out traffic circles up in the New England area, therefore, because they don't work. Well, a roundabout is completely different to a traffic circle. And you can see here, the New York Department of Transportation built a roundabout completely within the center of a traffic circle. And it shows you the difference between a roundabout, which is quite small, a traffic circle is very large, and the crashes went down, speeds went down, so it was a great success. So that's basically the difference between a traffic circle and a roundabout. Roundabouts are small, traffic circles are big. There's a lot of reasons for using roundabouts. You know, safety tends to be one of the major ones for a lot of my clients. Others, it costs, particularly maintenance cost. A lot of cities, DOTs, don't realize that every traffic signal you have in your city costs you about $3,000 to $5,000 a year for electricity and maintenance. Then every 20, 30 years, you have to rebuild it. So if you spread that rebuild cost over, you know, the 20 or 30 years, you're looking at $10,000 to $15,000 a year for every traffic light you have. That's what you need to budget for. Roundabouts, all you have to budget for is maintenance of the landscape. They'll last 100 years, or 200 years, we don't know, they haven't been around long enough. They reduce delay, they reduce the vehicle queues, and from my point of view, they're pretty. And that's what a lot of my clients want also. Now, why are roundabouts safer? One of the major reasons is, it's a lot harder, a lot fewer ways that you can hit somebody or someone can hit you. Okay, so the number of conflict points goes down. Same with pedestrians, there's a big reduction in conflict points. So less conflicts, less chance for crash. Multi-lane roundabouts, there's even a bigger difference between the number of conflicts and the, between vehicles and between vehicles, pedestrians, including bicyclists. So you have reduction in conflicts first. The second reason they're safe is speed reduction, and that's the most critical design element in a roundabout. You see here, on this one that was in Daytona Beach, you've got a lot of deflection, and more curvature, the lower the speed. On the same roundabout in the opposite direction, there was a straight line into the roundabout, and the result was, you had some, three minor crashes here, you had 19 over here. So the difference is just the way it was designed. The Federal Insurance Institute for Highway Safety did a study of roundabouts, one, two, and three-lane roundabouts. The average of all of them was a huge reduction in crashes. More importantly, injury crashes and fatality crashes. And if we compare roundabouts with traffic signals, stop signs, the roundabouts always win from the crash, number of crashes. But, as I showed you previously, if you don't get the design right, your crashes can actually go up, and that has occurred at a number of roundabouts in the U.S. and Canada. And the reason the crashes went up was purely and simply a lack of speed control. That was it. Okay? And, you know, sometimes even the police chief can recognize a bad design, you know, in that, you know, in this case, the police chief on the front page of the newspaper said, "All the crashes are happening because people are entering the roundabout too fast." So I can't stress enough, but speed control is vitally important in any roundabout design. As far as pedestrians go, the pedestrian only has to cross one direction of traffic at a time, so they go from the curb to an island, from the island to the curb. And so you, as a pedestrian come up to a roundabout, you look left or right, depending on which way you're crossing at the roundabout. And you only look that way, you find, wait for a gap, i.e., you wait for the car to stop, or you find a gap big enough for you to cross in. If you do that, you will never get hit at a roundabout. The only way you get hit as a pedestrian is to walk in front of a moving car, which you shouldn't do at traffic lights, or you shouldn't do on the road system anyway. So don't walk in front of moving cars. Okay? And when you, if, many times, the cars will stop at the roundabout to yield to traffic in the roundabout, then you walk between the stopped cars. You can't get hit that way. In Australia, they did a big study, and, because we've got a lot of roundabouts there and a lot of traffic signals, and you see there's a big reduction in pedestrian crashes. Some pedestrians still, and some of those pedestrians, by the way, are drunks, and we really have trouble with them, okay? Even at roundabouts. I used to have them at traffic lights at one intersection, there's bars in two diagonal corners, and they come out of one bar because they were drunk and they got kicked out, so they walk diagonally across the intersection to get to the other bar. Some of them didn't make it. They actually got killed trying to get across between two bars. So that's one of the reasons I started going for roundabouts. And the basic reason pedestrians have a safer time at roundabouts is because there's speed control and only one direction of traffic at a time. And with, for people with disabilities, there are certain requirements that we have to comply with within the roundabout design. They're all simple, they're all straightforward, we've been doing it for years, and the feedback we've had has been, it's very successful. People with disabilities generally have no trouble with well-designed one-lane roundabouts, and at two-lane roundabouts, we're now moving towards putting in hawk signals to help people with disabilities get across multi-lane roundabouts. Bicyclists, many years ago, I invented the bike ramps for the city of Davis in California. The idea being is, when a bicyclist comes up a bike lane, particularly in Davis, California, you have a big variety of bicyclists. Now, some bicyclists are commuters, professionals, they will not use the sidewalk system, they will just go right through the roundabout. Many of them can go just as fast as the car through the roundabout. So they just get in the middle of the lane and go straight through the roundabout. Those who are not comfortable, or if the traffic is too high, we give them the bike ramp here, and they go up onto a widened sidewalk, and they go around the roundabout. So as a bicyclist, you have choice. So, as a bicyclist, you have choice. You, you know, and under low-flow conditions, you may be quite happy to go through the roundabout. If it's busy, you don't really like it, so you use the sidewalk system. But you have that choice. And this is a project I did in San Diego, where I took a five-lane road, made it into a two-lane road. And one of the benefits of it, we now have a lot of bicyclists using it. Here's a lady, I reckon she's probably about seventy-five years old, riding her bicycle into a one-lane roundabout. Uh, we have, you know, sort of your commuter bicyclists, uh, a teenager, and you have the professionals. And that's what the road is like now, it's just, instead of five lanes, it's two lanes, median, fi- five roundabouts in thirty-six hundred feet. Um, I recently did a project for the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, and they wanted a comparison. This, the queues at the roundabout, and these were the queues that we're going to get at the signalized intersection. That's the difference. On the costs, if you build a roundabout as part of a road project, then it literally doesn't cost you any more. Maybe a little bit more for curb and gutter, but you don't have to build all the asphalt for left-turn lanes. So, it, it's a bit of a wash. If you go to an intersection that's existing with, say, with signals and you pull out the roundabout, sorry, pull out the signals, put in the roundabout, then it's going to cost you a few hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars, depending on how big and so forth. But, over a twenty-year period, you save money because you have less crashes, less, little, little to no maintenance on them, there's fuel reduction costs and there's noise goes down and so on, a lot of costs. Uh, sorry, cost benefits. Driving a roundabout is a, is a concern for a lot of people. And basically, the, the simplest way I can explain it is, pretty well, everyone here came out of a driveway to get here. And you're going to drive out of a driveway when you leave here. And when you come up, and if you come out of this parking lot, you go up to, um, the main road, and you want to turn right, okay? You'll go up there, you'll look for a gap in the traffic that's coming along the road. And when you get a gap that's big enough for you to turn into, you make your right turn. That mental and physical process is identical to what you do at a roundabout. You come up to a roundabout, you look left, when there's a gap in the traffic, you drive into the roundabout. Okay? That's it. The big difference is that at a roundabout, the speed of the vehicle coming towards you is probably fifteen to twenty mile an hour. Beneath a beach road, you're looking at forty-five to fifty mile an hour. Now, where would you rather make a right turn? Fifteen to twenty mile an hour traffic or forty-five to fifty? So, if you can do it on here, you can certainly do it at a roundabout. The landscaping of roundabouts is a very interesting part. There's just some of the examples. This is, uh, unique, um, columns up in, uh, Kansas. Uh, this is in Vieira in Florida, there's a clock tower, that was at the Alp- at the PGA Golf Development, um, in Port St. Lucie. Virginia Tech, um, we've got a two intersections, fairly plain. Amelia Island, they put a, um, palm tree in the middle with ground. But it, important here was that, um, they didn't use very much street lighting there, but they put uplighting. And they put flash, floodlights onto that solitary pine tree, and at night, it creates like a mood lighting there, and you can see it for a long, long way away. Um, they even work in snow country. I just throw that in for everyone. Rural roundabouts, you get, you tend to get even better crash performance than you do at a, um, suburban roundabout. This is one I did, uh, in Kansas for the DOT, and, uh, you can see there's been a huge reduction in crashes, particularly property, sorry, particularly injury crashes. I, no injury crashes after the roundabout went in. Uh, you can use them at weird intersections, um, and this one is an important one for many clients because, uh, Overland Park in Kansas wanted to create a main street here, but they couldn't with the traffic signals, because you needed the four lanes, therefore you couldn't put on-street parking. So, they asked me if a roundabout would help, and so I designed them a roundabout. Now, all these streets are just two-lane roads, and they've got angle parking up here, and that's helped them create their main street town center there, only because of the roundabout. Um, downtown Asheville, North Carolina, they had a five-lane road. I redesigned the whole road, all the way up to the top of the hill down here, and so you went literally from, um, six lanes there to two. So, now, you have on here, you have a median, you have travel lanes, you have bike lanes, and you've got a lot more on-street parking. So, roundabouts can give you a lot of benefits other than just the cost savings or the crash Jensen Beach, Florida, they've even got the train going through the middle of it, and that is a six-legged intersection with the train lines through the middle. So far, it's been very hard for me to find an intersection where I can't fit a roundabout. Freeway interchanges, there's just a whole bunch of freeway interchanges I've designed for various departments of transportation from Arizona, California, Missouri, Kansas, all different ways to doing them at interchanges. Um, there's two ways to designing them. We have what's called the offset left, slow speed in, a high speed out. My way is the low speed in and the low speed out. And, uh, if you get into roundabout, you'll hear that there's two, consultants have two competing ways of doing it. With the offset left, it costs you a lot more because you've got a lot more asphalt to put down, because you have to bend the approaches to get your speed reduction on the approaches. Uh, with the radial design, I only go basically back just beyond the crosswalks. And that's about a hundred, you know, sixty, eighty feet from the intersection, that's all you need. Lot cheaper to build. Problem, common design problems, in my career here, in the last probably five years, I've redesigned, uh, fifty-four roundabouts that were badly designed and were failing, and these are the reasons they're failing. Trucks running all over the curb lines. Uh, speeds through them too fast, and so you have a lot of crashes there. And, uh, crosswalks too close together, it's, it's many, many reasons why roundabouts fail. Um, multi-lane roundabouts, if you get into them, they're no more difficult than signals, people think they are, but basically, all you have to remember is if you come up to a traffic light, you want to make a left turn, you have to be in the left lane. Want to make a right turn, you do it from the right lane. Very simple. Through in either lane. Same thing at a roundabout. It's absolutely no different. So, there's some pretty roundabouts that I've designed, Sarasota, uh, Coral Gables, uh, Jensen Beach, Gainesville. So, you can see that, um, there's many different ways of landscaping a roundabout, depends on, uh, what you want to do with them. And you can mix them. Uh, this is one street I did in Grand Rapids, Michigan. You've got, uh, a one-lane roundabout, um, this one here is, uh, is here, then you have a two-lane roundabout here. And this is one they built off to the side. And, uh, and even at a two-lane roundabout, you have a through lane, through right, and a left. You have a right, uh, and a second right, and a left, and a through, all from that lane there. So, there's many different ways of, uh, designing roundabouts, you can mix and match them to the, um, local since, uh, area. And, um, this morning, I was talking to your staff and, uh, looked at the map with them, particularly John, and, um, had some possible suggestions. Old US forty-one at Terry Street, like the lady said, upstaged me earlier. Uh, US, old, uh, US forty-one at Rosemary. You could look at one at Benita Beach to create a gateway. I'm not sure, but I never, ever throw it out until I actually get the traffic volumes and actually analyze it to see. Because I know so many times, I've just looked at, you know, roundabouts on six-lane roads or four-lane roads, and ended up saying, "Well, look, the road's overdesigned because you need all those stacking lanes." When you put a roundabout in, you don't need as many. An interesting one, something my clients would think of, is Benita Beach at Barefoot Beach Boulevard. There's a gateway to the beaches. So, you're coming down Benita Beach, um, road and bang, you come through this roundabout, which is, this is a gateway to the beach. Okay? Um, you can do Imperial Boulevard at Terry. You know, in fact, there's several locations on Imperial Boulevard which are, you know, possible clients for, uh, roundabouts. Benita Beach Road, uh, east of I-75, at those subdivisions, and if any more subdivisions, um, develop over there, a good place for a roundabout which develops, uh, higher meter design is a gateway to their development. And you put the roundabout there, which helps identify their development, as well as actually makes it cheaper for them usually to put a roundabout in and building all the turn lanes and putting in a traffic signal. With that, um, oh, I did want to mention one, because John mentioned this, uh, this morning. I'm working on a project right now for the Florida Department of Transportation in, on US seventeen in Orange City. Orange City is similar to you, they don't have a downtown. Um, US seventeen is a strip commercial, uh, road through their city. And they want to create a city center, a heart for their city. So, they asked the DOT would, you know, roundabouts work. So, I've looked at and said, "Well, yes, you can take that five-lane road, make it four lanes and put four two-lane roundabouts in." But, if you upgrade this road to the west and move just five hundred cars a day, or five hundred cars an hour, sorry, over to this road, you could make US seventeen into a two-lane road with four one-lane roundabouts on it. So, my next stage is to meet with the city and talk about it. So, we're getting people now to thinking beyond, uh, you know, what's there has to be there. Well, what's there doesn't always have to be there. And so, you know, and this is a case where we're looking at, maybe taking US seventeen from five lanes down to two.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council, questions?
Yes, sir.
Yep, go ahead.
I mentioned to, uh, Matt, uh, thank you for the presentation. Nicely done. I mentioned to Matt, when we, um, when we finish Shangri-La Road, it's going to be a drag strip from Imperial down to Terry and, uh, down to Old Forty-One. A roundabout at, um, Tropic Acres or a roundabout at Windly Key would really slow the traffic and give, uh, a lot more s- s- safe entryway into that, into that road. So, we have to do something, and as long as, as long as we haven't built it, then maybe that's the time for us to really think about a roundabout and see how it works.
All right, good, good. Yes, anything else? Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll come back this way, go ahead.
Uh, can you tell me your name again, please?
Michael Warwork.
I'm writing that down. You know, this is wonderful. I, I just see so many possibilities for a city, but I was very excited, just as a comment, to hear you talk about Route, uh, uh, seventeen. Because, uh, we are looking at, uh, US forty-one and Benita Beach Road. We only have so much room to build roads, you know? And it takes away from the other amenities. I was very happy to hear you say, "A series of them," because I'm just imagining, sometimes people call our city a, like, a pass-through city, or they don't stop. They just, you know, gear to Fort Myers, Naperville. In other places that you've built them, have you noticed like an economic impact from people slowing down and maybe viewing the scenery and saying, you know, "Hey, I want to stop here because this roundabout has calmed the traffic?"
Okay. The best example we can give is Golden, Colorado. It's a project I was not involved in, um, but I knew the city traffic engineer, and, while he was telling me that they took a five-lane road, made it into a four-lane road, and put in four two-lane, one-lane roundabouts along the road. And, uh, it was strip commercial, and, um, during the, uh, economic decline of a number of years ago, uh, they found that sales tax was, uh, revenue was, um, static throughout the city, except along that strip, where it went up seven percent. And one of the main reasons that they believe it went up was accessibility into the shops along this, uh, road was so much easier with the roundabouts. So, people were able to, um, come down the road, go through the roundabouts to get to the store they want to. And then when they come out of the store, they're able to get back home a lot quicker, um, because of the roundabouts, instead of having to wait for the signals. And, and other cases are starting to come up now, because it takes a while for the data that come in, right? So, you can actually compare the before and after data.
And, and just my last question, what are the speed limit ranges? When, let's say, you have like a US forty-one or Route seventeen, uh, how do you change that, does it make the wait longer? I don't think it actually does, I think it actually gets people through faster because you don't have the stacking.
Well, typically, the, um, when you replace a signal with a roundabout, the queue length goes down from about, to about a third to a half of what it was under traffic signal control. So, the queues go way down. The delay time goes down even more, because at many signals, and I noticed it here last night, just trying to get, you know, along the road here, seemed like I caught every traffic light coming in from I-75.
Boy, riding with you's got to be just an awful experience.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I love it.
Go ahead.
But, you know, I used to design signals, and now I know, you know, why people do things, and like, typically, people put a, a, um, green wave progression in, which is great if you're traveling down the main road and you happen to catch the first green, you can get all the way through, right? That's what signal linking is all about. But, if you come just after, well, then the odds are, you can get caught at every red light along that road, you just came in at the wrong time. But worse, if you're on the side street, all right? Like I was for a while last night, you sit there for an enormous amount of time, so you're looking at, I don't know, seventy-five seconds, ninety seconds delay on side streets to get out onto these roads that are coordinated, okay? And, um, in Australia, we got our hands slapped when we did that, and we were told by the politicians, "You will not go over a hundred and twenty seconds for a cycle time." Right? So, that you minimize the side street delay, okay? So, that was, we learned our lesson on that one. But, uh, with a roundabout, yeah, you will still have a delay. Don't think it's, you know, you put a roundabout in and magically you'll never have to stop, you know, and have to wait. But, y- instead of that seventy-five second, you may be having ten, twenty, thirty seconds. But normally, most of the roundabouts I designed, thirty seconds is probably about the upper limit of what we would design a roundabout, uh, for, for the delay.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor, for having him come.
Yeah, thank you very much. Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Michael, when I exit this place and I take a right, I can see the traffic coming. Is there any problem in a roundabout with vision, where cars are coming from the circle?
No. In fact, uh, if I go back quickly, uh, to there, where was it? Driving, uh, no, uh, sorry, wrong way. Yep. See, um, see, with the, uh, road here, you're looking at, you've got a straight line coming down the road. So, you've got good vision, like you have out here. At a roundabout, um, you're looking out, you're not looking, um, because you're now on an angle, you're looking at ninety degrees. Here, you're typically looking out at ninety degrees. But you have this curvature here, so it actually can be a little easier to see people, because instead of them coming, right, from down, down the road here, you're looking at, coming at you on a curve road. So, it's a little bit easier, but it really doesn't make that much difference, because when the cars are doing like fifteen, twenty mile an hour, you only need a relatively small gap. So, you're only looking out, you know, maximum of a hundred feet, right? And when the car's a hundred feet away, you can actually make it, you know, you make your entry into the roundabout. At a hundred feet, that's, uh, not enough space here. You know, typically, you're looking at a couple of hundred feet. And the difference there is that it means it takes you longer to get in here, because you have to wait for a much bigger gap than it is at a roundabout. Now, one thing we do have to take care of in roundabouts is not getting into the roundabout, is being able to see the pedestrians, you know, as you, you know, enter the roundabout, we- able to see the pedestrians, you know, as you, you know, enter the roundabout, we make sure you can actually see the roundabout as you start to move in. You can see the pedestrian crossing. We don't like putting mountains in the middle, because drivers don't have to see the other side of the roundabout, but they want to be able to see. So we have to make sure that when you're here, you can look across the roundabout center island and see the car that is coming around from the opposite direction. So, you know, there's things that we, we do have to take care of, particularly in the landscaping of roundabouts.
And previously, you mentioned about, in New England, that you used the term traffic circles.
Circles, yeah.
Are using it interchangeably with, I think they call them rotaries?
Rotaries, yeah.
Okay, same thing.
Exactly the same thing. They're big, because back in the 60s, the design standards in the US for rotaries, traffic circles, was high-speed in, high-speed circulation, high-speed out. To get the high speed, you have to have big. And you, the standard says you had to be around 400 to 600 feet diameter, depending on what speed you wanted.
And finally, my cousin lives in Brisbane, and so I enjoyed the accent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Janet, and I'll come back to Pete.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for having, thank you so much for being here. This has been very thought-provoking. And that's good, get us thinking about different things. But what I'd like to see also was that you're not talking always about a circle, that it was done with more of an oval elongated version, so that there's less intrusion into those areas on the side. And I thought that that is something that maybe we can adapt in some of those places where you're not taking over so much of the, the properties along the side. So it's a great alternative. And I was glad to see that. And I would just love to say that I think this is something that we could use on Terry and Old 41, and I could just see a nice big piece of art in the middle, and, yeah.
A dog, maybe a dog.
Maybe a dog, maybe a palm tree, whatever. But, yeah, very exciting. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Chickens. Yeah, we're easily excited, so, go ahead.
Right.
Tis the season.
It is. Go ahead.
Yeah. In reply, this roundabout here, the rectangle one in Cape Coral.
Yes.
That's on Berkendale Road, if you ever want to go down and have a look at it. It's on Berkendale. But that was done because the right-of-way here was only 60 feet wide. And I gave them a choice of a roundabout at this end and a roundabout here. So you get two roundabouts about 60, 80 feet apart, or the rectangular one. And we fitted the rectangular one in with no right-of-way purchase. And that was often, most of my clients say, you can't take right-of-way, so I have to squeeze it and massage it in.
Yeah.
And I still have to worry about the speed control coming in and the speed control going out. So, you know, I've used round, elliptical, rectangular, square, egg-shaped, dumbbells, peanuts, right? So we've got a lot of choice.
Truffles.
Thank you very much. Good. Anything else, Janet? I'm going to go, Pete, go ahead, and I'll come to you, Bill.
Welcome, and thank you for the presentation. I think it was very informative. And for anybody that was struggling over some of your words like "hot" and "after," I understood them perfectly, being from New Hampshire. So, thank you very much. I felt at home a little bit from the old school there. But my wife often says I'm the master of the obvious. But I think moving forward, and I'd like to explore this, we need to figure out what purpose we want them to serve here in town.
Right.
Dr. Steve had pointed out, you know, potentially a good area to slow the traffic.
Right.
Which, which is, which is fantastic, and I'm all for that. But I also want to think we need to look at these to slow down, not even slow down traffic, get them to stop, shop, park. And I'd like to see, you know, certainly us with at least one location, at least, for differing purposes. One to help the safety of the traffic, and one, at least to get them to stop. And there's a lot of different locations that we could look at that in town. But I also think parking, as I know up in Sarasota, there on St. Armin's, I mean, without parking, I don't, you know, I think would be, I think would be a big impediment there.
Right.
And certainly, we need to look at that in town as well.
Yeah. Well, since you mentioned Sarasota, I'm currently, after this meeting, I'm going to be meeting with the city traffic engineer in Sarasota, because they're taking Ringling Boulevard, which, you know, is run through their downtown. At Palm and Pineapple, we've already, in that stretch from US-41 to just past Pineapple, the city has already changed that from a fight, four-lane road to a two-lane road and put in two roundabouts. That's already occurred. And the goal there was to slow the traffic and increase on-street parking. I'm having a meeting today on Ringling and Orange, where we're looking at a roundabout there, and the possibility of a roundabout at Pine Street outside the county office building, so that we can put in more parking. And in that case, because the road's a little wider than the first section, we've got the possibility of putting in, going from four lanes to two with parallel parking and wide planter strips, or angled parking and no planter strip. So, you know, and eventually, the, the goal of the city is to take Ringling Boulevard down to a two-lane road from Lime Street, which is way over past the railroad tracks, well beyond 301, into a two-lane road. And I think ultimately, we'll have probably about eight to 10 roundabouts along there.
Good. Well done.
Thank you.
Good. Bill?
Michael, thank you for the presentation. I have one question. How important are traffic counts before you, using Old 41 as the example, it's a heavily traveled road for reasons of north-south. And do you, how much consideration, traffic, you mentioned, are there any places you wouldn't put a roundabout?
First off, before I give a firm opinion on the, on the viability of a roundabout at a location, I have to do a capacity analysis. So I have to have the peak hour traffic counts. That's mandatory. I can look at, like I did and said, US, sorry, Old US-41 at Terry, looking at it, looking at the number of lanes that are out there now. My idea is, is the possibility of a one-lane roundabout, even though it's probably got about 12 lanes out there now, right? You know, people think, oh, no, that looks like a one-lane roundabout. Well, maybe, maybe a right-turn lane from East Terry to Old 41 North. Yeah, maybe, okay? But that's just, you know, my experience. But for me to say that this is what you need, okay, I have to have the traffic counts, I analyze it, then I'll tell you that, you know, it needs X number of lanes and, you know, okay, it's a one-lane roundabout with the right turn lane. Or maybe my guess was wrong, and you may need two turn lanes, you know, something like that. But it's very important. And the second thing that's important in a roundabout design is the right-of-way, right? Some clients will say that you can't touch the right-of-way at all. Others will say, oh, well, you know, we don't mind a little bit. Because typically, if you're going to retrofit a roundabout, you need corner clips. You may need a three-foot corner clip, you may need a 20-foot corner clip, which is usually achievable, because in those cases, you can't, you know, you don't damage the business that's on the corner. Downtown Sarasota, Pineapple and Orange, if I wanted right-of-way, you have to move, you know, four-story buildings. And now, where would I not put roundabouts? Where I can't do a good design? Okay, that's first. You know, if I, you know, and I had one client recent, this year, in California, that said, oh, you've got to make the roundabout smaller so that we don't take X amount of land off this developer. And it got to the point, and I said, no, I cannot make it any smaller. And the consultant I was working with said, he backed me, and we told the city, no more. It's not going to work under those conditions. And so we, the job was canceled.
One more question, Bill. Have you visited the villages?
No, but I hear they've got about 12 roundabouts there, and I'm sorry, they didn't put in more.
Anyone that's visited the villages knows that they have 100,000 people there now, and the roundabouts are, work very well, based on visiting there more than a few times. And, but they do slow down the traffic coming off the main thoroughfare, and they are practical in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything else? Michael, thank you so much. Let's stay in touch, shall we?
Okay.
All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. We are at the consent agenda. And, yes?
And this includes the one we've added on the errata?
This includes the one on the errata, which is to reappoint Jennifer to the sustainability committee.
Motion to approve.
To recommend county does that, yes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second, and I want to speak to one of the items.
And go right ahead.
Okay. On the CRE concert, I just wanted to point out that the mayor has been named the president of CRE for the coming year, and...
Chairman.
Chairman, excuse me. So congratulations. It's a big, it's a big job, and it's important for our city. So thank you for taking the responsibility.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on, on the approval of the consent agenda as written? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, we are to the public hearing, and there will be public comment on this. Item 8A.
Thank you. Begin reading the title block. This is an ordinance amending and restating the Benita Springs Property Maintenance Code, Ordinance Number 03-04, as previously amended, amending Section 2, Purpose to Add Term, Landowner, amending Section 4, Exterior Storage, Accessory Structures, and Fences to Include Registration for Temporary Storage Units, commonly referred to as PODs, on Residential Property, amending Section 6, nuisances applicable to residential property, amending Section 7, vacant lot maintenance, amending Section 9, nuisance vegetation and requirements for landscaping, buffers and native vegetation, amending Section 12, outdoor single and two-family residential lighting standards to provide for streetlight shielding, providing for conflicts of law, severability, conclusion in code, squivener's errors, and ineffective date. This is a second reading. The ordinance has gone through the public hearings as well as the LPA. The LPA has reviewed for consistency, and it is legally sufficient. I believe that's it.
Okay, good. Counsel, any questions, comments?
I just have one comment.
Go right ahead.
On page 14, under 3, where the streetlights, you put in, the term "streetlight" does not include yadda, yadda, yadda. I don't know if either strike what the term "streetlight" means, or add, these, these lights are, under our lighting code for residential or whatever, or, and commercial, that they're subject to blah, 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 compliance under those?
What you're...
Because I'm not quite sure what you're trying to get at there. I'm sorry.
Right. The streetlights that we're talking about strictly in this one are the ones that are installed by Florida Power and Light.
Okay.
Okay. I can, and the definition is, and the reason I took a book out is because the definition comes straight from the statute. I don't want to change the definition of the lights, because it kind of creates a confusion. What I can do is add a sentence that, other lights that are outdoor are above, but we have standards already in there.
Yeah, maybe just refer to those standards.
But they're, they're right above it, like the lumineers. I mean, I can?
Yeah, just refer to that, just so that people can't say, oh, well, we're exempt because you said these don't, this shielding doesn't apply to us, or something. Just refer it above, or just to refer the section above. Customer-owned or customer-maintained outdoor security lights, outdoor area lights of any type, regardless of their location. I, you know what I'm saying? I'm not sure that...
Well, it's pretty, and clearly in 3, Martha, it says, a light that is owned or maintained by the streetlight provider, government or utility. So I, I think that, you know, the average customer or private one is not included in that, wouldn't it?
Sure.
She wants, what I understand is for some sentence to say something such as, any customer-owned or customer-maintained is regulated...
By section da-da-da.
Right.
That's all.
By other sections in this section, by other provisions in this section.
Yeah, that would just make it clear for people who might come upon it and say, oh, well, I don't have to worry about that. But then they wouldn't refer to the section above.
Okay.
That's all.
You guys all right? You all right with that?
I have a question.
All right.
Make it user-friendly.
I'm going to go to Steve, then I'll come back to Bill. Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
I had this conversation with Audrey. I'm just not comfortable where we are. I mentioned last council meeting, I wanted to make sure that PODs wasn't a trademarked term, and it is a copyrighted trademark. So by using PODs without a trademark knowledge, acknowledgement, I think we're probably violating something. But more than that, it appears to me that we're probably giving the city an inference that that's a particular company that they ought to be trying to use. I know that it's, it's an administrative problem for it to change that at this point, but I, I think if this is going to be a 10- or 20-year ordinance, that we ought to have it right.
Audrey, what does POD stand for?
POD, uh-oh.
Portable On-Demand Storage.
Portable On-Site Demand.
And it's the, it's the trademark of a company called, that's out of California.
Why don't you just say portable on-demand storage units?
I think that still relates to the issue that he has. The, if you look at the draft and the changes, because I did listen to you at the last meeting, on page four, it's only referenced one place where I put commonly known as PODs. I could take out commonly known as PODs and just put temporary storage units, shipping or sea containers, referred to as TSU collectively. And then what I did is I took out the term PODs everywhere in the ordinance, except the title block and that one reference to it. So I can take it out...
Just take it out of the title block.
She says she can't take it out of the title block.
The title block I can't take out, because we advertise the title block. The purpose of a title block is to explain what we advertise. So I can put a line through it, if you wish.
But if we approve this, the advertise, it's not going to be in the ordinance, right?
We already, it would, not in the codified version, it would...
Not in the codified version.
Just in the title block. And then I would take it out on page four, the one reference I left in, when I said commonly referred to.
I'm not sure what you mean, it's, it's taken out except in the title block. I mean, is that part of what the ordinance is going to read?
We advertise, no.
I know what you said. What is it, what it's going to read?
It will show documentation of what we advertised. So if, it depends on how you read an ordinance. If you read, going back into the paperwork and the archival, you will find it in the online documents. If you go into the codified version, no, you will not.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
All right. But you, you feel as though we'll be okay, and it won't look like we're being prejudicial towards a company or something like that? That, I think that's your, that's your concern, right?
That was your concern. And quite frankly, I don't believe that we have done a trademark infringement as far as trying to show that we have advertised the brand for a particular company by referring to it. No, my, the purpose it was in there, and we've had that discussion, the purpose it was in there is because people commonly refer it to that as a common name, no different than somebody might refer to the issue.
I have to argue with the attorney, I'm sorry. That is not a generic term by definition. It's not like Kleenex.
I understand it's not a generic term. What I'm saying, it's a commonly referred to term.
Oh, I don't know.
But, but further to the point...
But I've taken it out of everywhere.
Okay.
The one place I can't take it out is showing the history of what we did, because that I would have had to do by permission to advertise time.
And because quite frankly, we've already done it. That's what, that's why it's called history, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Any other, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
How many administrative approvals are in this ordinance?
Oh, gosh. I might have to look at Chris for that, if he knows.
Good morning. How many administrative approvals as far as the TSUs?
The total. I just want to know how many are in the document.
He's looking at...
The same thing you want?
Huh?
Yeah.
No. He's looking at the next one.
My helper here, thank you.
I mean, there might be something like, we do an adjustment to the driveway or allow something, and...
All right, million, millions?
Yeah.
Good answer. Good, good question.
Millions. Thank you, Chris.
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you.
So what's the answer?
Oh, millions. I answered for them.
If you don't move your...
None.
Yeah.
Well, administrative, potential administrative approvals, everything in here for a POD, you will, it's a regulation that our staff will be making decisions about, therefore their administrative approvals. Is that correct?
Correct.
There you go.
It's a code enforcement issue.
I know what it is. I'm just asking, what, how many administrative approvals do you have on, within the ordinance? I guess as many as you'd like to have, I guess.
You mean as far as interpreting the ordinance and applying it?
You, you can make a change based on your...
The only one I know of is extending the timeline.
Okay.
And that's, for the TSU, is the only one that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. Good. Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go open the public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak towards item 8A only, please come forward. towards item eight A only, please come forward. Seeing none, uh, well, uh, public comment is over. And, uh, council, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to approve to, as, uh, discussed here, to strike language for pods throughout, except the title block, and, uh, to include some reference to the lighting criteria above in that second sentence in page fourteen.
Good. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And the motion is seconded. Audrey, do you, uh, understand?
Yes, and, um, let me tell you what the changes will be.
Okay.
I was just reading to do. I will be adding to "Streetlights," "Customer-owned or customer-maintained must be shielded in accordance with the standards and criteria of section, uh, twelve."
Okay.
So it'll just say that after I write it. And the other change is on, uh, page four, I will be deleting, uh, the information that says commonly known as pods.
Okay.
No reference in the body of the ordinance.
Everyone okay? Any other questions? There is a motion, a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye, thank you.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, now we're at two eight B. Go ahead, Audrey.
Thank you. I'll read the ti- for the record, Audrey Vance, City Attorney, and I'll read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, amending certain sections of the zoning ordinance, amending division two, City Council by amending four dash eight one, City Council's power to appoint local planning agency, revising section four dash eight three, functions and authority of City Council for administrative appeals, amending section four dash one four five, powers and duties of the zoning board, amending section four dash one five two, zoning board standard for review to remove administrative appeals, amending section four dash two oh three, additional requirements for applications requiring public hearing, creating section four dash two oh four, submittal requirements for administrative action applications, amending section four dash six five three, the table of use regulations for agricultural districts to allow limited horticultural waste transfer sites by special exception in AG two, amending section four dash thirteen twenty-two, closure of facilities to include pet daycares, amending four dash thirteen fifty-two, to revise the setbacks, landscaping and other conditions for display, sale, rental or storage facilities for motor vehicles, boats, recreational vehicles, trailers, mobile homes or equipment, creating section four dash thirteen fi- fifty-three, to establish standards for convenience food and beverage stores, automotive service stations, fast food restaurants and car washes, creating section four dash seventeen seventy-three, to establish standards for home occupation with outside help, revising four dash thirteen eighty-one, in division twenty, junk scrap or salvage yards, dumps, sanitary landfills to allow limited horticultural waste transfer sites by special exception in AG two districts, amending section four dash two oh one eight, joint use of parking lots, section four dash two oh one nine, other use of parking lots in section four dash twenty twenty, required spaces, amending section four dash twenty one ninety-one, measurement permitted encroachments, amending to remove references to outdoor ranges to section four dash twenty four seventy-two, required approvals and section four twenty four seventy-four setbacks, creating four dash thirty one oh five, to clarify that use permits are required, providing for conflict, severability, codification, inclusion in code, squivener's errors and ineffective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The LPA did review the ordinance again at their December thirteenth meeting. In addition to the prior changes, they did request, when there were administrative approvals, if there was intense administrative approvals, that for those approvals, they would need to have, um, special notice provisions, uh, by posting on the property, uh, not for all administrative approvals, because as will, what will be explained by community development, some of those administrative approvals are almost every day, such as home occupation licenses. So to post on every piece of property, um, might create some additional delays. Uh, John Dolmer can further explain this ordinance, um, if you have questions.
Do you have, John, do you, um, I think you have a presentation to do here, right? Or no?
Yes, sir. Uh, we do have a presentation. I know that we had, um, focused a lot on specific issues and we can go through a presentation to address those, or council can go straight to questions, whatever your pleasure is. But we, we are ready to go.
All right, go ahead. Play through.
Good morning, Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering.
Hey.
Um, John and I did prepare a brief presentation. I think we can get through it in about ten minutes. Um, just hitting on the changes made pursuant to your comments on December fifth of our first reading, as well as the recommendation by the local planning agency. Not every section of the ordinance, um, was amended based upon those comments, so the items we'll be hitting on first are administrative appeals, as well as submittal requirements for administrative actions, which will be covered by John. Uh, proposed change to the pet daycares based upon concern regarding, uh, impacts to abutting residential properties. Standards for vehicle, boat and equipment display, um, we did, uh, delete some of the requirements in that section based upon LPA recommendations, as well as recommendations from your EDC, uh, also for convenience food and beverage, and this was to strike a balance, uh, between the treatment of these more intensive commercial uses, but also respect the additional costs to new business owners within the city. Um, horticultural waste transfer sites, we have some proposed, uh, language changes that could address some of the items heard on public comment, and also just to reiterate and clarify the intent of the language changes proposed. And then lastly, we have a very minor change to other use of parking lots. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to John for the administrative section.
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor. Um, if you recall from our last meeting when we were discussing administrative appeals, uh, there was quite a lengthy discussion, but it boiled down to just a few areas. Uh, there's also, uh, a direction for us to meet with the Benita Beach Alliance to discuss some of their concerns. This was one of the, uh, main areas they wanted to discuss. And it boiled down to, to a couple of, of specific issues, both in your discussion and our meeting with them, is, uh, who should have the right to appeal? Should a third party, uh, have the right to appeal an administrative decision? So if someone applies to community development for, uh, permission, whether it be, uh, uh, you know, they all escape me now that I'm at the podium, but if they apply to us for administrative permission and that, uh, application is denied, should it just be...
Consumption on premises.
Consumption on premises, thank you. Uh, should just the applicant have the right to appeal, or should someone that feels that they are an affected property owner or resident of the city also have the right to appeal whatever decision we make? And, uh, we, the current proposal simply states that, uh, just the applicant would, and would still allow any affected property owner to appeal that decision in court, but it would not come to you. Um, another item that we looked at was zoning verification letters. I, I think we were in agreement with, with the members of the, the Beach Alliance, that because a zoning verification letter does not confer rights upon a property or an individual, uh, there really is not, is not appropriate to appeal that type of decision. An appeal, uh, from a zoning verification letter would happen if someone had applied for a permit or permission associated with those rights, and that would be the appropriate time for that.
Uh, do you want to tell them what the suggested changes to the language?
Which one?
Uh, zoning verification.
Oh, go ahead, if you've got a...
If I can, just in front of me. The change that we will make as a result of the meeting yesterday is on page six. Uh, we'll have it saying zoning verification letters and we'll take out the rest of it, except when requested by property owner. Uh, and when read with, uh, the beginning part of that sentence, no appeal to City Council on zoning verification letters, because it's a snapshot.
Good. Thank you.
And the last item you see on the screen is, uh, a discussion that you also see on page six. It is item D, and the proposed language states, "An administrative official's determinations or interpretations of state or federal statutes, codes, rules or regulations." It goes on to state that those are not, uh, appeals that would be heard by the City Council. So they are excluded from your review. And the thinking is that if someone wants to appeal how your local staff has interpreted regulations that have come down from, from another government, they would go to that government for an appeal. Uh, there was discussion yesterday when we met with the Alliance, that, uh, the word interpretation should not be included. And I went through, uh, Florida statutes last night, looking for specific terminology that would show that this matched up directly. I didn't find any, but it appeared that the intent was there. Uh, I don't know how council feels on this. If you want to, to, uh, leave the wording as it is, uh, like I said, there was concern that when you're putting interpretation down, that might be conferring additional authority to staff that they don't currently have. Uh, I don't look at it that way, but that's your decision. Our recommendation is to leave it as it is.
Yes, okay. All right. Uh, council, you have anything about this section right here? This is all you have in what would be called the administrative appeals section?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments about this?
Uh, I do. I, I would, the third-party appeals, the city count, uh, the city manager, city manager, I'm sorry, the city attorney did mention in a memo, um, about if, and on the green sheet, I believe. I'm not looking at that right now. I'm looking at community development report, uh, about to limit it to, was that adjacent property owners or...
No, the third-party...
Property owners with standing, which it's, that's already limited to them anyhow.
The, the comment I have was, third-party appeals, um, are a very bad thing when going into this process, because you're trying to formalize, uh, something, uh, that would confer rights on another person's property. Now, with saying that, the third party can go to court, which is what is in the ordinance, as well as the third party can always come here and lobby you to change your rules.
Well, that's what we're making right now as a rule.
Correct. But what I'm saying, not on the rule of administrative appeals, but on, say, the rule, and a great example is the height rule. We've had to play with the height rule multiple times because of people who gotcha. You know, they figured out loopholes. And, you know, that's one that from a legislative, we have had to work with several times. So the appropriate methodology for a third party isn't to come here to appeal it, it's to go to court, you know, because otherwise what's going to happen is that the city will assert itself into somebody else's jurisdiction, and at the end of the day, it will be the city left holding the bag for the cost for damages.
Okay, it's, and, um, there was a comment earlier about land development code. Uh, um, the local planning agency had recommended, uh, a sign?
Yes.
Okay. Well, in the past, um, you know, we, for a zoning case, yeah, I think it's what, three hundred and seventy-five feet? And then we amended so that our comprehensive plan
Yes.
uh, would notify neighbors within three hundred and seventy-five feet. Um, I don't know if three hundred and seventy-five feet is the feet, um, the amount of feet, but why would we not want to just let the neighbors know, especially if you're doing administrative appeals, which, I mean, administrative, uh, um, acceptance, approval, thank you, sorry, A, um, a minute, particularly with bars and consumption on premises, because I think a neighbor would like to know.
That actually is going to be on the next slide.
Thank you very much. We'll get to that, but that's my question.
Okay, um, just, just for everyone's verification, um, presently and for the last twelve years, have third parties been able to appeal?
No, sir.
Not in the history of the city?
Not in the history of the city.
Okay.
A legislative decision, they can.
And so what...
Not quasi-judicial.
I don't want to cloud the issue any further. I just want to be sure that council knows we're not taking a step backwards here. I don't think...
You are not making a change.
Yeah.
Tent of this at the beginning was to go ahead and not have the, have the council do some certain things, which will be on the next slide. And, and in this case, you guys are just...
This all started when we tried to make sure that you were the appellate body.
Ta-da. Okay, yes.
Uh, John, uh, I'm sure you're legal using, uh, the word interpretation, uh, but that verbiage bothers me too. Is there another way we could, uh, change that to read differently?
I, I am personally, if, if the council chooses to take out interpretations, I really don't think that affects the intent. Uh, I've only had a, an evening to go through the statute to look for, uh, matching language, to see if this indeed was, because this was language from the county that we had adopted, that we are now keeping, uh, to see if this had a relation to authority given to the state or to the federal government. Um, that was my major concern. If there is not that exact language in higher, uh, regulation, I have no, no issues at all.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Yes?
If the council has made an error in law and granted some, thought, you know, some permission that we're really not allowed to grant, or staff, is there a process for city staff or city council to administer a self-initiated appeal? You know, we, uh, do you know what I'm saying?
You would not have standing to sue yourself, because to get case in controversy, you need to have an actual justiciable issue. What you would do is you would tell us and then we would revoke and we would deal with those issues at that point.
Ouch.
Well, yes.
Yeah, okay, because I think that was the concern there, but is there a, there is a current process to do that?
Yes, you can always, I mean, you can always tell them to revoke a permit, to not process a permit. There may be consequences to that action. You know, depending on the circumstances, but especially if council, if staff did something by mistake.
Yeah.
You know, and they did not have authority to do it.
Well, and that, and that...
There might not be consequences.
That's a good point. And the ultimate appeals process is to come up to the microphone and said, hey, look what they did over here. You guys make it, make it right. And then council feels strongly enough about it, you do, and suffer whatever consequences laid therein.
Yes, sir.
So...
And then change the law. So that, that has existed and still will exist.
Right. So, you know, the comment that we needed to have a self-initiated appeal process is here. We can do that. And as far as appeals, there's always appeals on the legislative decisions here, but not on land use decisions. Are there any other cities that you looked at their appeals process? Do any other cities have something that we don't want them, you know, that keep them at a hot water?
You mean as far as like reconsidering your opinion once you've issued your opinion?
On a land use decision. I'm not talking about on a legislative decision.
I know that you can always go back and reconsider, but you might have consequences to that reconsideration. There's no way to get out of that issue, depending on the circumstances.
The only time I've seen that is when there's new evidence.
So what I'm saying is other cities, all cities have an opportunity to go back and readdress. It's just whether they're willing to pay the price, because once you vest, you're done, right?
Well, you're making a assumption they vested, but if there's new evidence that you made a decision without an adequate basis, if you're remanded to make a decision, let's say the court tells you, you have to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
That happens.
Well, I mean, isn't at the heart of this whole conversation, the, the fact that, that administrated, uh, what you want to put into the category of administrative decisions are decisions that aren't going to be particularly controversial or intensive. I mean, or you wouldn't be putting them over there if, I mean, the ones that you don't want over there, you just don't put over there. You keep into this other part of the system. I mean, is, isn't that the whole point, right?
I agree 100% Mayor.
Okay, so if you, if you don't want them over there, don't put them over there. But if you put them in there, you, you're, you are by very definition kind of letting go and saying, you know what? We're, we're gonna trust staff to, to make these decisions for us, because the consequences, consequences one way or the other, aren't as severe as they might be on these other issues. So more important ones, the really, really important ones, we're gonna keep over here where we've got complete control, so to speak, right?
That is exactly right.
Okay.
So I just want to establish, we already have an appeals process
Yes.
and, and avenue for the city council and the city staff to correct errors.
Yeah, uh, the ultimate would be if he made a decision and the city manager disagreed with that decision, I imagine there would be some internal administrative actions taken.
Ow.
As, as we're seeing, kind of, and some other things. Anyway, uh, why don't we move along?
Thank you, Mayor.
If we can.
Yes, sir.
Good. Uh, is that okay? You are, did you have something else? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Just a real quick question. Um, uh, councillor, you refer to Florida statute one sixty-three dot thirty-two fifteen regularly. Is there a brief description of what that statute is? I mean, I tried to read it, but I...
Bar and ranch? Uh, seriously, it would be somebody arguing inconsistency with the comprehensive plan and taking it up through, um, a red erschieri that way.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, let's go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, what I hinted out to you as we started this item, uh, was meant to address some of the discussion that you had here and also with the LPA. And the question was, what do we have the authority to approve administratively? And unfortunately, it's not as easy as putting together a list and zoning districts, because there are certain conditions in which applications can be approved administratively, and the exact same application with a few differences in, uh, conditions could require a public hearing. So what we try to do to the best of our abilities is to place a relatively simple document in front of you, so you had a reference point for that. Uh, now, the administrative approvals themselves also had quite a bit of discussion at the LPA, and this was one of the, the major points, as well as what the city attorney had, had mentioned in her statements. The first request was actually that we send out a mailing to... was actually that we send out a mailing to surrounding properties, just like you would for a public hearing, as you referenced before. And because of the, the number of administrative approvals, it really, you would almost have to have somebody full-time folding and sending letters. Plus, there's really no guarantee that everyone would receive it, if you were out of town, if you were just the leasing, as opposed to the property owner. So, it wasn't as, I didn't think you were going to be getting the benefit of that time and effort that you should. So, I said, well, instead of sending out a mailing, how about we post a sign? And that way, everyone that drives by that site would be able to see it. That seemed, that was received relatively well by the LPA, and was discussed here. Now, one of the other items that I think you might want to think about is, is what was attached to that, and that is, when we receive an application for administrative approval, under this proposal, a sign would be posted on the property. But we would then be required to hold that application for 14 days before we could render a decision. I mean, 14 days is not eternity, but it is still a lengthy time compared to how fast we're turning these, these approvals around currently. So, what balance does the council wish to strike between advertising and efficiency? Currently, I think the system works as it is. If you would like to, to have us post signs on the property, I can be very agreeable with that. However, I do not agree with, with the 14-day delay. I just, I just think that, like you said, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of an administrative approval is that they are applications and requests that council has determined their impact to be negligible or nonexistent. And to hold up those applications for a specific period of time without a specific reason, I find it difficult to support that request.
Yes, Carl?
Yes, if I might add, and I'm in agreement with Mr. Dolmer on this as well, I think, while we might be able to work through the notification process with regards to signage on the, on the properties, the vast majority of these requests are not significant, and we operate on the premise that the council confers some authority to staff to handle certain decisions, around which you have placed parameters, in which we want, we need to make those decisions. If the staff is erring, if the staff is not following the parameters that set, if the parameters are not clear enough, then that needs to be rectified, and that can be done through this body and through additional legislative action. I would not recommend that we lengthen the process to try to get an administrative approval on the off-chance that we're going to make an error, or that those, those particular parameters are inaccurate. We want to fix those when we find them, and absolutely, and this whole process is part of that even now, in looking at, at the Chapter Four changes. And so, I would not be in favor of the 14-day hold either.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Pete? John, you had mentioned placing a sign, and certainly, that's pretty straightforward there. However, in this day of transient, you know, people that aren't here, people that would never see the sign, would you be, certainly, you said you're open to mail. Would you be open to maybe some kind of a recorded message that goes out to the surrounding people? And when you say surrounding area, could you kind of fine-tune what surrounding area would entail, or mean?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of, of a mailing, because I just don't think you get the benefit for the amount of time and effort that you have to put into such a mailing. And it's not that, that I don't wish to publicly announce there's an application that we're reviewing, it's just, I don't know if that's the best way to do it. And to cut right to the point...
That's why I said maybe recorded, I mean, you don't have anybody's email address. I know, but just some other way, because if you don't see a sign, you don't see it, and you have no idea.
I don't think there's a perfect way to advertise an application that's in the door. Some people read the newspaper, some people drive by, some people would rather have a phone call. So, any one method, I don't think, is 100%. So, really, what is the best way to advertise this with the least interruption in process? I had felt personally that that was a sign posted on the property.
Okay, and I, I guess I'd like to have further conversation about that.
Good.
I guess I don't.
I think we're gonna. I'll go to Janet, and then we'll come over to...
The question is, is if a sign is posted on the property, how much time, then, if you're saying not to allow a 14-day hold, that you're not interested in that, but once that sign goes up, how much time do people have to question what's going on, then?
We could list specific time periods for particular applications. Depending on what it is, we have a pretty good feel for how long it's going to take to go through the approval process. You currently have regulations that, for zoning applications or public hearings, that state how long signs have got to be up. In this particular case, what you would do is, is shift those type of regulations to state when the sign has to be posted, because you would need it posted as soon as possible, because you're not looking at extending it out that far. Personally, I don't know how much time you want to have for public review and comment, and this goes back to the argument, or discussion that we've had before, it's an administrative application for a reason. Not that we want to try to move something through without notice, but because of its very nature, I had looked at this as more of a courtesy-type issue, so those around them can ask what's going on, and feel comfortable with what's occurring.
Right, and I think that what we need to, then, what I'm thinking of, is when we see those zoning signs, the red Z on it, you're driving by, you can't read what is actually on that sign, you have no idea, people don't know who to contact, we need to have a centralized, like, what number would they call to say, I saw this sign, could you please explain it? So, there needs to always be someone, who would that be?
Well, that would be our, our office, but I think that what you're discussing is almost more of a universal advertising-type question, not that it's a bad question, I think it's very good.
We need to back up a little bit here. Administrative approvals, let's talk about what an administrative approval is. Everything you do, almost everything that this staff does, everything that we have policy that we set, allows staff to go by their day-to-day business of issuing permits. Every permit that comes out of that place is an administrative approval that somebody else doesn't like. I guarantee you, every dock permit, every fence permit, every shed, every pod decision, everything that goes through there is an administrative approval, every one of those. So, so what we have done, is the form of government, is if we're going to make regulations, we're going to make ones, you know, over these things, and, and let you guys do it, because we would, we would become staff if, if we were going to make every decision like that. And, and so, I, I would suggest to council, instead of going down this road of, oh, what are we going to do for, to let people know what's going on, if you don't want an in there, don't put it in there, do it yourself. Take the responsibility on, if something in there is like, ah, we, I can't even stand the idea of them, you know, making this decision, don't let them make it. It's, it's pretty simple. And, and then, we have a process for putting signs up and doing all big deals, but if it's, if it really doesn't rise to the occasion, just don't, you know, let's not, let's not mess with the system. I, I mean, really, I mean, because you're, we're really talking about killing a mosquito with a bazooka here, you really are. All right, go ahead.
And I get your point, Mayor, you're absolutely right. And I know at our last meeting, when we looked at this, our last council meeting, that administrative approvals have been given for COPs, and that might be one that we do want to take back and look at, if we're going to allow administrative approvals for some of these other, other things, which we have over the years, you know, and we trust that these are less intense or smaller, or less concerning uses, then go at it, because we've given you the parameters. But for bars and cocktail lounges, COPs and nightclubs, I think that's something that the neighbors would like to know about, and maybe we do take the authority back on that. We have shortened the process for special exceptions, and that might be something, because there are ramifications to late-night, you know, carrying-ons and possible dangerous situations. And, you know, we have a lot of churches in this town that might be interested to, you know, have public input, like we have had in the past. So, that would probably be the only one I'm looking at, that I would like to take authority back on.
And that is, is council's prerogative, just for your information, there are locational standards in place. The administrative approval for consumption on premises would only be for interior, and if they met certain locational standards. If you are within certain radius of church, schools, residences, or if you want outdoor seating, those do come before you as special exceptions. So, this council, either indirectly or directly, by adopting these county's rules or creating your own, has set up location criteria for, for alcohol.
Yes, and you may, if those, the kind of things you want to reconsider, you, you may want to, want to, you know, turn the page here and, and get on with this, and then come back and look, if it's, if it's a problem, if, if consumption on premises are a problem, strengthen the law, make, make those distances further, do what you want to do. I mean, I mean, it's, it's just one of these deals that, you know, I mean, right now, though, we're not making it easier, or, or, or anything like that, we're maintaining the status quo right now. And, and I haven't seen this big thing pop out there where the people are like, you know, roar, make it less easy to do this.
I'll just tell you, one of the problems that I've encountered recently, is that there are some consumption on premises places where we don't have anybody enforcing time, and they're beyond the time of their zoning. And so, when we confer this authority to allow that, there's nobody to go out and enforce that authority, either with, either if council makes it, or you make it, but I'm not quite sure how that's handled, and it is a problem that some people have been reporting.
Community policing.
Okay, yes.
Community policing would handle that, but let me ask one question of Mr. Dolmer, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
And that is, in your practice of handling administrative approvals, have you had the circumstances where you have asked an applicant to notify adjacent property owners?
Yes.
And why do you do that, or when do you do that?
If there's the potential of an impact, or a significant change in the property appearance, it really goes to solve problems before they exist.
So, we have it where we voluntarily require it, sometimes for administrative approvals. The question is, do you wish to have it as a mandated requirement on all administrative approvals, recognizing that some administrative approval, because it does create a time factor for things such as home occupation with help, which is an administrative approval, or actually even home occupational licenses, which is administrative approval, do you want to stop everything to require proliferation of snipe signs that say, you know, AA, I guess, administrative approval?
If you require signs, there will be a large number of signs in the community.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, and that's, that is the point, is that there are ramifications over and above, the cure may be worse than the disease in this case, I would think. Any more discussion about this matter? Anything? All right, we're good?
Yes, sir.
Carry on.
Back to Mrs. Crespo.
If I could get direction on this, or will you give direction at the end?
Yeah, I think we'll wrap this up.
Thank you, sir.
I hear Alexis Crespo, I did misspeak when I said this would be about 10 minutes, apparently, so I'll try to get through these.
You did, didn't you?
The next item is for pet daycares. As currently outlined in your LDC, any animal facility, boarding facility clinic, that has any outdoor exercise facility for dogs or animals being boarded, has to have a minimum lot size of five acres, and has setbacks from adjacent properties, as well as from residentially zoned properties. The proposal here is to relax the standard for a pet daycare facility, which would be limited in hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and you would have no situation where you'd have a dog boarded outside overnight that could disturb neighbors. The proposal here is to reduce the lot size to one acre, which we did not have any feedback from LPA on, they did recommend approval of that proposal. Additionally, they did not have a concern with our proposal for 100-foot setback from abutting residential properties, however, Councilwoman Simons did bring that up at the first reading. So, what I would recommend, if, if it's a pleasure of the council, is to increase the setback from a budding residential property to 200 feet, and that would be consistent with your existing setback for any unenclosed outdoor facility.
That's right. I'd agree to that, Mayor.
Yep, that's the minimum, that's the minimum criteria.
That is the current minimum criteria, sir.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to vehicle display, this is for vehicle, boat, RV display. The intent of this was to create additional setbacks and buffering for the more intensive use. Based upon recommendations from the LPA and EDC, we did remove the requirement for the berm. We felt that the right-of-way landscape buffering would meet the intent of screening the use, and again, trying to reach a balance between the cost and the benefit to a public view sheds. So, that would be the only change to that section. Similarly, for convenience food and beverage, also auto-service stations, based upon the LPA recommendation, we removed the requirement for canopy and color banding restrictions. This would allow for more eclectic architectural features based upon your LPA recommendation, and allow for prevailing architectural standards for your national companies to be allowed in the city of Bonita. So, this is a balance between what Lee County has recently passed, and what could be approved here in the city.
I object to that.
Yes, go ahead, Stephen.
I'm sorry, you zip past where I had a couple of questions.
Oh, I apologize.
On page, well, it starts on page 20 of 45, and my, I'm sorry, it starts on page 20 of 45, and it, the question is social service agencies, and if you'll, and if you look at the tables, I pulled up social services definitions for Class III and Class IV, and if you'll bear with me just a second. Class, Class III, Group III services include halfway homes, homes for destitute men and women, outpatient substance abuse, and if you go down to the next, the next page with Group IV, we're looking at rehabilitation homes, homes for emotionally disturbed. So, here's my question. We have, I, I think we have those designations in three different zoning classifications. We have an industrial, we have a commercial, and we have an agricultural. So, why, why are we putting in an agricultural when we know there are going to be residents around there, particularly since we haven't heard from the LPA on what their, what their position is on, on, I'm sorry, position is on positioning and locating any kind of homeless shelter?
Okay.
Do, John, do you want me, or do you want to?
Um, you're referring to the memorandum that you received today from LPA, or, sorry, from John Dolmer today, as opposed to the actual ordinance that's under review today?
I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance under review today, too, I mean...
On page 21 of the ordinance dealing with social services?
Page, it's page...
23, I believe.
23.
John? There is no change proposed, it is currently existing only, and I'll just add that, I believe in January, we will be coming to you with a first reading on supplementary regulations and changes to the social service use group. So, that will be addressed shortly, and no changes proposed in this ordinance.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to pass something, council pass something, that we know is going to be debated later, and very likely changed. If, if we have, if we have an issue with residences in agriculture area and other family uses, then that, we're going to have to talk about that.
There, what you have in that memo is not a proposed change. This is as currently...
I recognize that, but I'm saying, the LPA hasn't brought forward their, their issues yet, and, and given us anything to look at for, on operations and locations and so on. So, I don't want to pass something today that we're going to have to go back and, and review and change.
Well, then, you, you're either going to remove it from there completely, which is a change...
Yes.
Or you're going to leave it as it is, which would be no change to the regulation until we've studied it, and the LPA has come back with a recommendation.
And my question to you, Mr. Mayor and Council, is, we will have that opportunity, is that correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely. That, that's, this whole, the whole thing that the LPA is working on now is going to encompass all these social service...
Oh, yes, sir.
Needs, is it not?
All right, fine, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for bringing it up, Steve.
Thank that courtesy.
All right. Oh, and where, where were you at there on?
I believe Councilwoman Simons had a question regarding the convenience food and beverage.
Oh, no, but this is the one that really brought up a lot of woo, kind of, right? Okay, this is the one you want to talk about?
What, the color banding and the canopy? Well, you know, in our old 41 redevelopment, you know, I think that's one place where if we'd had this in place before, that we could have had asked, you know, the... we'd had this in place before, that we could have had asked, you know, the various convenience stores to meet our architectural standards. And in fact, Ben, they had changed their canopy, and I had asked, can we please get them to recess their lighting standards? Like, no, they didn't do 50% more than this or that, or whatever. So they didn't have to do it, and it was a missed opportunity, in my opinion. But I would, I know in other places that they have, they have something like this in place where they all have canopy and the color banding removed, so it fits in to what we want to see as maybe an Old Town style, or whatever, or Old Florida style, whatever we're calling it. These corporations are large, and if we want to, say, the large branded corporations do this as opposed to moms and pops, I mean, that's okay with me, too. Because they tend to have bolder colors.
The question is, is this applicable everywhere, or but, I mean, in the downtown 41 where we have special standards? It doesn't wipe that out, does it?
Correct, that your Old 41 downtown standards would supersede these regulations.
Supersede that.
Correct.
Okay, and a Benita Beach Road, anything, any special district?
Any special treatment overlays you create will supersede this.
This doesn't supersede everything else.
Okay, there was one thing that was on there, as you would know, would probably be my little thing, was, let's see what page was that on? Oh, golly gee. Page 28 is where you're talking about this change or not change. Let me get to that, wrote my notes. The only thing that I would ask, because they tend to use ballast lighting underneath their shed-type roof or whatever canopy they have out front, that if they have that kind of canopy, that the canopy lighting must comply with, if they have a canopy, that canopy lighting must comply with Section 3-262 of the Land Development Code. Because they tend to use that strip lighting, and it's not shield, it's ugly, so.
Okay, you have that?
So that would just, to be asked, to canopy lighting must comply, to keep that part that the, the LPA wanted to remove.
Said number two would be kept.
That's what I would ask.
Okay.
You know, I like the whole thing, but, and if Lee County's doing it, why don't we do it? I mean, they don't always, I don't want to always do what they do, but if this is a move in the right direction, I'd like to go that way.
All right. You okay with that? Are we okay?
To go in that direction with the, against the LPA's recommendation?
Are you suggesting that to, to go ahead and remove the canopy and color banding restrictions, but you're more worried with the lighting?
Well, like I said, I'd take the whole thing that was removed by the LPA and bring it back, but if we're going to bring anything back, I'd like to bring number two, and I'd like to hear what the other council members think about that.
All right, council, any comment? And so you're talking about on page, what was it, 28?
Yes, 28. It's highlighted, and thank you so much for doing that, that is a nice improvement.
Why, thank you.
Really appreciate that, that helps us see what the LPA is talking about.
Helps me go through it.
You, too, awesome.
So where it says canopies must be of one color, consistent with the predominant color of principal structure, and that, that's what you're wanting to remove? I mean, we need a better picture of what the, what the consequences of this probably is realistically, in a real world kind of a sense.
Consistent or complementary to, or something like that, if that's the right word, but I'm not asking to remove this, I'm asking to bring, well, it's there. It was removed by the LPA. Their recommendation is to remove it, I think that would be a better way to say that, their recommendation is to remove, instead of being removed.
Right, it's strictly a recommendation, it has not been taken, obviously it's not out of the ordinance, it's up to city council to tell me what to put in and to take out of the ordinance.
Right, I'd like to see that included, that whole section, but I'd like to also hear from council members if they have thoughts about the consequences of that, or any changing in the wording that could be inclusive.
Well, I, for myself, I don't, the only part of it that I might question is be that, I think, I don't know what the lighting, I know what 3-262 on the lighting standard? I don't have a copy of that, right?
I haven't looked at it in years.
Just yielded, some places aren't.
I don't know what the consequences of that are.
And it would still have to comply with it, whether it's in there or not.
Well, they're going to have to comply with it, they got to comply with the provisions of that, right? So it says, so you could leave that one in there, canopy lighting must comply with condition, whatever, right?
But that's no change to the regulations, because...
But it's stricken through here.
Correct.
It would just say, it would just help them be user-friendly to have it there, so if they're looking at their canopy standards.
Yeah, yeah, and so far as flat roofs, I agree with that, there shouldn't be a flat roof.
But I like the next sentence.
I mean, do you have, what was the conversation in regards to that?
I think you could think of a Shell station or a Sonic, those would be, you know, your auto service stations or fast food and beverage that have the flat roof with the color banding and just requiring them to step up their design standards to create more architectural interest.
And why wouldn't we want a better community?
So in other words, service station, the overhang out front, it's not, the canopies aren't what we're accustomed to that are attached to the building, we're not talking about that, we're talking about the standalone?
Apply to both.
Talking both.
It would apply to canopies that are covering your window and entries, which, and I can't think of many cases where you have flat canopies over your entryways, but really, I think this is more so for the automobile service stations where you're fueling up that large structure in the front that's most visible from the right-of-way, and having it be a little bit more attractive than has currently been approved.
And so, and so this...
And that is subject to opinion.
I'll turn it loose to you guys for a second, I just want to be sure this is clarified. This, this, this struck, stricken through, has this been in effect for a long time, or this was something you had suggested to put in here?
This was approved by Lee County approximately one year ago.
I don't like the...
That's new language, it's not in our code.
So this, this is new language, Lee County is doing this countywide?
Yes.
Countywide.
Right, so the county would do it, we would still allow, for example, if you wanted a certain, like, primary color for a canopy, you could build that canopy with the primary color, the way I'm reading this, and put your formula stripe that might, you know, to be able to distinguish your business, to say Shell is a good example, because I believe they have like an orange-yellow.
So by, so by striking through this language, we would be adopting criteria that is architecturally less stringent than is in unincorporated Lee County?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, council?
I don't like three.
You know, coming out and saying flat roof canopies are prohibited, I don't have a problem with that, but I really like the next sentence, I think that should, should stay, that they must be consistent with the architectural design and features of the principal structure. I think that that sums it all up, and then what happens beyond that with the color and whatever, it should just all be consistent with the primary structure. It shouldn't look like it's a huge standalone, whatever.
Okay.
I would strike three, Mayor, because, you know, little cute little French canopies with stripes, I mean, those are adorable, I wouldn't want to just have one color, so...
Oh, you mean you would leave three in?
No, I would not want to have three included, one-color canopies.
Well, would you want it to be consistent with the predominant color of the principal, or would you want it to be contrasting with the predominant color of the building?
No, I'd just strike the whole thing, I'd just get rid of it, because, you know, we'll leave that to our architectural review guy.
Okay, so, so council, I'm just, I'm going to try to gather consistency, canopies must be consistent with the architectural design and features of principal structure, you're good with that, right?
Yes.
And the flat roof canopy prohibition.
You want to leave, you want to leave the flat roof canopies are prohibited in there? Council?
Yep. I don't know.
As I understand it, you would be keeping all of the language of D with exception to B of one color? Is that council's direction?
Yeah, I don't think it should...
I like one, keep all of one. I like two, keep all of two.
Keep all of one, keep all of two, and three modify, so you can allow stripes, so the canopy must be consistent with the predominant color of the principal structure.
Complementary, you know, you don't want it the same color, sometimes a nice color.
Right, but consistent with the predominant color, you don't want it necessarily contrasting.
So, so the canopies must be consistent with the predominant color, right?
No.
No?
Well, consistent could be a contrast.
Okay, when we, yes, exactly. When we picked complementary, I think would be the right word, because when we pick the palette for downtown, you have two different colors that you could trim in the wall. Why would you not want to have the canopy fit into that scheme? You're just going to have the same, it's boring.
Yeah, you had a comment, I think, I hope?
Well, consistent is not necessarily firm language there, it would be open to the interpretation of the architectural reviewer, as would complementary.
I think complementary is a better word.
When you take out that it's the same color as, you're really removing the substantial part of that language, so you're kind of left with loose language, fluffy language that's not necessarily enforceable, so you may just want to strike three altogether and then not prohibit people from doing striped or contrasting canopies.
What about advertising on canopies? Because people do that, but I wouldn't want to see big splashy advertising all over a canopy, how is that restricted in other ways?
The sign code, your sign code restricts the size of text on, on your...
Thank you.
Canopies, you're welcome.
So, but the architect's going to look at these drawings anyway, right? And the architect's going to, the architect has the ability to look at it and say, well, you know what, this canopy, you know, although you've got it red and your building is, I don't know what, blue?
Orange, whatever.
Whatever, and that's rather garish, I love that word.
Yeah.
No, I don't. But, I mean, does the architect have any leeway in there at all so far as that, or they can just paint it whatever color they want?
Defer to John Dolmer on how the commercial design standards are currently enforced.
In other words, I want my canopy to just stand right out there, and we're okay with that?
Sunshine yellow.
Currently, in chapter three, there's, there's similar language to what you see here, and it says that canopies must be the same architectural style and color as the principal building. Principal buildings are then also covered by neutral tones in terms of color, so...
So, so this is kind of a, this is redundant language here?
To a certain extent, you do provide additional, you do, the ban on accent banding is new. I mean, there is language in there that infers to that, but there isn't anything that specifically says that. Flat roof canopies, the discussion in the LPA was really revolving around architectural styles. You have certain architectural styles that use flat roofs as part of their theme, art deco, who knows what else, but it's possible. And you could, when you say no flat roofs, you eliminate those architectural styles. You have an architect on the LPA, he likes different design, and so naturally, this was a progression from that. If this board wants to be more consistent in architectural themes and provide less variety, there is, there is a strong thought pattern to that, that would state that you want things to be relatively consistent. But consistency brought it in, diversity brought it out.
Okay. All right, well, good deal, that, that's not helpful at all, but thank, I'm sorry, no, I'm teasing, okay?
Let me just take one more shot at this, if I may.
You, please.
If you're going to remove the flat roof canopy prohibition, and you're going to, if you're going to remove that from here, then this really would be redundant to your chapter three. So the value of this additional language would be your accent banding, your one-color canopy, and your flat roof canopy. So if you're not comfortable adding those things in, I would recommend striking this entirely and relying on your existing chapter three commercial design standards, because items, the other items are somewhat redundant and already in your code.
Okay, council, I'm, I'm comfortable with this recommendation, because if, as long as they're, they're covered in the remainder of the code, and you've got architectural standards that do cover some of this, I mean, I mean, is that what you're saying, right?
It covers consistent architectural standards for the site and the canopies and the principal structure.
I mean, the other thing...
And neutral color tones.
And, and saying that the county has one set of codes and, and we're trying to keep up, but they don't have what we have in these other areas as well, our codes are different that back this up, so.
Mayor?
You know what I mean? Yes, go ahead.
Well, let me try another crack at this, three canopies must be of one color. When I was saying complementary, that's actually a term that's used in color design, so that you have certain colors that are complementary to other colors in design, so that's something that the architect could use for complementary technically instead of consistent. And I have no pro, I don't like the one color, but complementary I like, and I know that doesn't make sense to just put complementary instead of one color, but it does, like the mayor said, you don't want to see bright orange with dark blue, that's not a complementary colored design, you know, so...
As, as the code stands now, if, if this was deleted, is it consistent with the code that we have now? If this is deleted, this is new stuff?
This is currently not in your code, so if you chose not to include it, your code would remain the same.
Okay, council, I'm going to suggest something so we can get on with this and let everybody get on with their lives here, hopefully, is, is to recommend that we, we do as the LPA suggested, go ahead and remove this for now, and, and come back as we're, we're working on some other things, and when we have more information, we've got some examples, we don't have a lot of information to go by here, so if we could go ahead and strike it at this time, and then come back to it at another time when it comes to some other architectural standards, and we have more information, would that be all right? Because we'll be here all day talking about this one issue. Be all right?
Good.
Okay, John?
What, if you could keep in the ban on accent banding? We would recommend that. The other items, I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, ban on accent banding on, on canopy structures, right? Okay?
Actually, all structures, including canopies.
I ask for two, to keep two. Two and four, I'll go, or two and...
That's actually E, E relates not just canopies, but also the building.
Two and E.
Two and E, to keep those, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Two, two and E, well, let's just do it kind of, yes, you have something? Two and E, is okay? You're good?
Correct, yes.
Good, two and E, council? Going, 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 gone, okay. Two and E, that's what we're going to put in there, we'll cover that at the end. You got it, Audrey? All right, go ahead, keep, keep on, keep it on.
All right, we're almost to the end here, horticultural waste transfer sites. This is on page 30 of your ordinance. John will supplement some of my presentation points here. What we were seeking to do through the changes to the supplementary regulations was to codify your existing process. As you may recall, over the course of this year, you've approved several horticultural waste transfer sites, which is limited to vegetative materials, and no composting, no burning, no shredding, no chipping. You've conditioned them, you've approved them through your special exception process, which allows for staff review and certainly the public hearing and public comment. So we were looking to modify the supplementary, supplementary regulations to acknowledge that process you've been taking on over the past several years. So what the changes do would maintain your existing public hearing process, which would either be through special exception or planned development. The development order approval would remain required, and certainly the process allows for conditions for approval, which the ordinances or resolutions that I've seen pertaining to this use are lengthy, and there's, you know, 15-plus conditions regarding landscaping, setbacks, prohibiting burning, composting, and things of that nature. So the one change that I would recommend based upon the public comment you heard would be to change B under, again, 4-1831, to just further clarify that these transfer sites do not have shredding or composting, it would simply be storage for a temporary period of time, which would be conditioned through your public hearing process until it's moved to a site which would be approved to burn, chip, shred, et cetera.
Okay. All right, council, any questions?
Yeah, just very quickly, the, Mr. Barry and Councilor Dottie had brought a lot of questions forward, I thought in a manner that clarified what they were asking. Are we close to having some sort of resolution on those two issues, those issues? Special exception?
I have had several conversations with Mr. Dottie to explain the process and how there are no changes, how this is simply codifying our existing practice, and whether there's agreement or whether there's disagreement, it would probably be best asked to Mr. Dottie, but we are not proposing a change.
Okay, thank you.
You're, what, what you're probably doing is, are you, you feel is that you're trying to clarify some of the, the issues that, that have been, that have not been clear?
Amending your code so that people who want to do this use have a clear understanding of how to go about the public hearing process.
Right.
As other uses have been approved previously.
And, and you're going, it's going to be business as usual, you just want people to understand what that is, is that correct?
That is correct, and, and I know Mr. Barry has concerns about new applications coming in that require less process or less review, and that's not the case. The, the amount of review that a new applicant would have would be equal to or greater than what he had received.
All right, so we're still going to harass people, right?
To the greatest extent possible, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
And, and thank you for making that, that change right there, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Dottie's letter was very instructive and informative, and I learned a whole lot, and I appreciate so much that he sent me the Florida Administrative Code, which vegetative matter is not, I think, what we're talking about, and vegetative matter, I think we want to put yard waste if we do anything, because vegetative matter can include juices... vegetative matter can include juices, tomatoes, yadda, 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 all that, yeah. And so, yard waste is a term that they describe, and I think what we want to say is, for landscaping and landscaping places, this is a place that you can drop materials. I'm not in favor of doing this at this time. There is, there is a place in the, the opening section where it says incorporated within the city limits, where we should just say, "in the city," because we don't have any jurisdiction outside. That was another good point by Mr. Dottie. And six hundred and sixty feet from a residential structure, what about a commercial structure? What would the setback be?
It would revert to the underlying zoning district where this use would be allowed by special exception, so that, that would be your standard setbacks per your code.
Okay, because they said by special exception and, and industrial plan development and a commercial plan development, that I don't know what the setbacks would be there, but it would be allowed to controlled burning. And I know there is an IP, it does say that. I know the IPD, like, over by the dog track, I don't think they'd be so happy about controlled burning.
Yes, John?
I'm sure the attorney doesn't mind if I steal her seat.
Now, you're leaning forward.
We are not discussing burning. Burning would only be approved specifically. You would have to state, burning is one of the things that you can do, and as such, the fire district will be reviewing that possible use for specific conditions as it relates to the life safety code. You were asking what the setbacks were going to be in, in other districts. There are specific setbacks for those districts. However, we will be applying those established by the fire district, because there is a concern. And, and this is just as much of a life safety issue as it is a zoning issue.
In an effort towards transparency, I did talk to Tim Ferguson with Barry Recycling. They, their transfer site, they transferred the materials like every seven, within seven days, out to like near Ave Maria, Wellwell Road, out that way. So, I don't see anything in here about requiring how quickly they have to transfer from the site, and that would be something I'd see. But I really don't want to see controlled burning in an IPD or a CPD.
The reason, the reason why it's listed is because there may be a situation at some point in the future where it is appropriate. But what I am not comfortable with is stating that there is a certain set of conditions that I can list now and look out into the future to recommend. Any approval for that would have to come before this, Counsel. And so, leaving the possibility there is something I feel comfortable with in allowing you to decide on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
We do not have any that are approved for burning at this point.
It's going to come before Counsel. Counsel is going to see everything about it that we're going to see in a special exception case.
Yes, sir.
They're also going to have to go, they do have, somebody with existing use, right? I've got a nursery, and I want to have, I want to have, do I have to get a limited review development order?
A special exception does not take the place of a development order, and a development order is required anytime that you are doing site work. So, yes, you would need a development order in addition to a special exception if it was required.
Right, right.
So, both those processes.
Both those processes are in place, even if there's an existing use that I want to, that it, that it doesn't complement.
Yes, sir. And that development order is going to cover those conditions that are established by the fire district in terms of height of the pile, location of the pile, how it's there, it's confined. Councilmember Simons had said, there's a, she had looked at a number of days before you removed the, the waste. I would defer to the fire district, who has limited the size and location of that pile and the required watering.
Well, then, I don't know if the state standard, I believe the state standard does require transportation in a certain time period. And it would be nice to say, we're going to have this yard waste transfer sites, because I think that's, that's different than, I think that's the intent. Is that the intent? Yard waste transfer site for landscaping companies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because when we have vegetative matter, which could include juices and tomatoes and farm composting and things like that, that would be different than serving our landscaping community, okay? Horticultural waste transfer site, I think it's actually yard waste transfer site is what we'd like to say, is it not? So, we can be compliant with state code?
I, I, I think you are compliant as it's written. If this council feels more comfortable with calling it yard waste, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
That might limit some of the confusion, and also some assertions by other people that, or by some companies, that they're going to accept matter that could be environmentally less, you know, palatable.
So, so instead of, instead of horticultural waste transfer sites, you would call it yard?
No, I think she means instead of saying a vegetative matter, say of yard waste.
Of yard, yard, of vegetative matter such as yard waste?
No. Storage of yard waste, such as grass clipping, shrubs, and brush.
Vegetative is removed, because it's, it's a certain definitive, a definition in state code, which includes things other than yard waste.
Okay. I think it's split in halves, but I'm okay with it.
Yep.
Yeah.
You want to make it yard waste, make it yard waste, because I think when you say such as, grass clipping, shrubs, and brush, you've pretty much narrowed it down to what you're talking about. I could say, I could say, storage of stuff such as grass clipping, shrubs, and brush. Oh, okay, that kind of stuff.
Well, it just makes it.
It's a kind of stuff.
It just makes it compliant with the state.
But that's okay. But what, the council is, is making it yard material. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Good. We're good? All right. Anything else on this, Counsel?
Yeah, to change that first paragraph where it says, changing it from unincorporated to within the city.
It is changed. It's struck through, you just can't really see.
Yep.
She just wants the incorporated area to be of the.
We don't need to say incorporated area. I mean, that's redundant.
Within the city.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Counsel?
Um, yeah, just a minute. I'm trying to get back to that page, sir. I'm so sorry.
And again, this clarification, where development order is required, special exception required, this will come to council, we'll be able to put over what are provisions, protections that we want to see available. It's not by right.
Correct.
So, we've got all kinds of protections, right?
Correct. And your surrounding property owners would also be noticed through the public hearing process.
They'll be notified, okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I don't know if we want to ask Mr. Dottie if this is reasonable to him, to include language that says, not only that development order for the special exception IPD, but that all approvals for horticultural waste transfer sites will require a development order?
It does say that, doesn't it?
No.
The language doesn't explicitly say that, because Chapter Three prescribes the scenarios.
Or was the screen that had that up there?
I understand that, but maybe again.
That was a bullet point.
Oh, that was a bullet point.
Per Chapter Three, your deal would be required.
Maybe again, to assuage fears and to be more user-friendly for people who want to come forward and do something like this, that they see that that is a requirement.
Do you have any objection to adding language to that section right there?
Something subject to the residential setback below and a development order.
Inappropriate development order approvals, because the type of development order may be different.
Yeah, inappropriate development order approvals.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Good.
And, and while I'd like to know if that satisfies the objectioner.
I'm sure he's going to come up and tell us that public comment.
Okay, well, is that going to be too late for our decision-making?
I don't think so.
Okay, sir.
Because we're not going to vote on it until we hear a public comment.
Hey, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
You're quite welcome, you're quite welcome. Any other comments on this part? Let's roll.
I just have one final change to present, which is your joint use of parking lots, Section four dash two nineteen, page thirty-one of the ordinance. We removed charitable or similar drop-off collected stations from that listing in accordance with Counsel's recommendation.
I think everybody's good with that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Good.
And that concludes my presentation, unless your staff had additional.
Anybody else?
Don't leave.
Yes, go ahead.
Don't leave.
Don't leave. Oh, come back, come back.
Page thirty-nine, I, I may have, I think, I'm not sure why you're striking out one for every two hundred and fifty square feet, you're making a four for every thousand, when that's the same thing.
Is that Jackie?
That's the old two-for-one sale thing, isn't it?
Maybe it's a typo.
It's not a typo, it was handed to me that way.
You can't trick us with math.
I'm sorry.
Not on your account, perhaps on, on mine.
But it's kind of silly. I'm, no offense.
Nice to go, Professor.
That is a valid comment.
There's a few of them, like, three parking spaces.
No, no, there's a half a parking space above. I didn't pick at that, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Would you go for two five hundreds?
Oh, wow.
You could do that.
No, that's ridiculous.
That's crazy.
That's crazy talk.
Mayor? I would recommend no change.
Martha?
I just have a grammatical error change on page six of forty-five. I don't know if it's grammatical or punctuation, so, well, because it does sort of cloud the meaning.
Can we hold those? Because I have a couple, too, that I'll tell them about afterwards.
Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay. On page six, E five, second sentence, let's get back to that. Sorry, get a scroll, and it takes a few minutes. Second sentence on page six.
These kind of errors, Audrey, are, would these be considered scribbling errors that you could, you could fix later?
We could fix that any time, even later, but if there's something I can fix now, if the council tells me.
Okay, I am just, I'm just, I'm looking at the clock here, that's all I'm trying to do.
Councilwoman Simons, could we do that later?
If these are misspellings and stuff like that, let's take care of it some other time.
Okay. On five, last, the last item on the page, second sentence, "In cases of challenges to development orders controlled by chapter blah, 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 no suit may be brought or filed or accepted for filing under the development order giving rise to the complaint has become final."
Correct.
What does that mean? Do you need a comma in there?
I'm going to go back to barn ranch.
Do you need a comma in there, though?
No, it's fine. Barn Ranch is a great example.
Oh, okay. Do you need a comma? Is that your question?
No suit may be brought, filed, or accepted for filing, comma, until the development order, wait, until filing, until the development order, comma.
You're good, are you, are you good with the language, Counsel? Okay, let's just, let's keep it like, you're good with the language the way it is and the way it's written?
There's a problem with it grammatically, but.
Are you good with it?
Yes.
Good. Let's, Counsel, you want to keep it like that or put a comment?
It's okay.
Got anything else, Martha? I'm sorry if I look like I'm rushing you, but I am.
I hear you, sir, and I really appreciate it. My last one, page twenty-nine, home occupation. Are we assured that the primary, primary use of the home is residential and not for business only? Because there might be some people using residential structures just for business purposes, and if they get a home occupational license, we're basically binding up code enforcement from being, maybe, I'm not sure. Either that the property has, the, it's the owner of the property who's, well, I don't know how you do that. The person could be owning the property and using it for business only, and maybe saying it's either owner-occupied or rented.
The resident of the premises shall not rent space to others in association with the home occupation.
No, but it, the owner of the space could be living elsewhere and using the space for a commercial use instead of a residential use.
But he would still be the owner of the facility.
Yes, yes, I understand that, but the use isn't residential. So, if you have a home occupation there, what you're really allowing is a commercial use.
So, the home occupation license, does this say that the, the person, it has to be their primary residence or anything like that? Is there language there in contain?
I think it's a requirement that.
Is that a requirement of it?
I mean, it might be a requirement of your home.
No, it's not, but that's what I'm saying. Do we want it to be?
Well, I'm seeing heads going, yeah, it is. So, let's see what it says.
You have, you have standards for, for home occupation that define what it is and how it operates. If, if you live in an apartment and you decide to sew clothing, I mean, most of your apartment can be set up to sew clothing.
But you live there.
That's exactly right, and that is one of the conditions. So, there are standards.
One of the conditions is that you have to live there.
That's, yes.
Is that true?
Or if it's a rental, that the tenant lives there.
Yes, it is your house, which is why.
With owner permission, or something like that, that you can have.
The primary use of the structure needs to be residential.
Yeah, if we could say that, would you say that?
It is in the home occupation standards.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure, because I, I don't want to, there's some issues around town. I don't want to make it difficult for code.
Are we, are we, are we good that they, with that, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good. Yes, what do you got?
I was thinking about a break, but that's just me.
No, you, you.
That'd be awesome.
No, if we could go ahead and get to public comment, I have some time to get.
I hear you.
All right. What, did you have something grammatical errors or anything? No?
Well, I do, but I'll bring them up.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Let's go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward on this issue only, please.
Okay, thank goodness for Rick Steinmeier and Martha Simons. Way back when we became a city, there was somebody that used to dump great big loads of tomatoes out in the woods, and they became a real fly hazard. And vegetation or, you know, what was in the ordinance, you could dump potato fields, boy, they smell great. We don't grow tomatoes, potatoes around here too much. They do in Homestead, but I think it's good to limit it to yard waste. Now, you've always heard make hay while the sun shines. Well, that is, you don't cut hay and bale it and put it in the barn when it's wet, because its spontaneous combustion will burn your barn down. So, I'm a little confused that the fire department wants you to wet down this stuff. It should be moved in a, in a relatively short period of time, because, you know, you get different verments and bugs and stuff. Move into this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Well, again, Jim Dottie, on behalf of Barry Recycling. Whatever this stuff is, whether it's yard waste, whether it's vegetative waste, it's solid waste. Solid waste is treated by transfer stations. Solid waste is treated by transfer stations. Transfer stations are already defined as an essential service and allowed for use on ag to land by special exception. So if this is a pure transfer station or transfer site, to use the proposed language, there's no need for this change at all, because it's already provided for under the Land Development Code. Now, when you get to the word "storage," does that mean disposal of solid waste? Does it mean we're just holding onto it like we would in a dump or a landfill? Or does it mean the transfer? Because transfer, if you use a transfer site or transfer station by state law, that's designed to move in and out the solid waste quickly, usually within a week's time. It's not storage, per se, the way I think they're contemplating storage here. Certainly not processing, because we've seen a back off from the composting and shredding, because those are actual physical activities to the solid waste. I submit to you fundamentally here, this is really a solution without a problem, because it's already provided for. The existing Land Development Code makes it clear that if you wanted to do shredding or composting, it's limited to AG1 land only. Everything else, as transfer stations are done on AG2 land by special exception. I appreciate the movement here to storage, but I think we're opening up the same can of worms then that we had as to the safety issues that I said before. And just so I'm clear, and I'm not sure if the presentation made it clear, I know they proposed this change to subsection B, but I assume then the proposed changes that I saw in the agenda to C and D would still go forward. I still have questions about why we have a different type of setback for these types of facilities, different from any of the other enterprises to which they're now added to in 1831, 4-1831. Mr. Berry would be happy to sit down with anybody from the development office and talk this through. If we're going to do something with respect to a heavily regulated industry like solid waste, storage, processing, whatever you want, as long as it deals with solid waste, there's already a body of law out there. And to make our Land Development Code consistent with, so that individuals like Mr. Berry who would consider opening up a transfer station, a processing, composting, whatever it is, they already know what the terms mean. Because to go to something with the mayor, really interesting, you can call it whatever you want, this stuff, but rotten tomatoes are vegetative. Rotten eggs are vegetative. Old food from restaurants are vegetative under state law. I'm not sure if that's what we want. But yet, I could make a good argument, even based on this, on the language that's proposed, I'd make a good law, argument for the other, another client, that it would fall within that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes. Minor correction I would make to John. I think he said there was one architect on LPA, there's two. Very minor point. I wanna speak to this, the right of the adjoining property owners to know. I don't, I don't believe that the city should have to notify the adjoining property owners of every little thing, but I think that when something used to be a special exception and it gets moved over to AA, one of the things that the surrounding property owners lose is that notification, their right to know. Now, you're taking a process that's this big, and even if you put a reasonable time of a couple of weeks, even if it's a week or 10 days, to hold up the decision before they know, that's still a big improvement. You're still being business friendly, development friendly, and all that. Now, I think it would not create an undue hardship on staff to do this. I think that their surrounding owners, taxpayers, have the right to know, and they have the right to know before the bulldozer comes out and starts to build something that they didn't know about until it's approved. They've lost the right to be able to timely notify council and lobby for you to look into something for them. Doesn't mean they're gonna win. We're not giving them a right of appeal, even though Collier County does do that. I would really encourage you to think about that, and I agree with counsel, the signs don't do it. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and I have to leave for a dentist appointment. Thank you.
Oh, well, that would be almost as fun as what we're doing here. Speaking for myself. All right, anyone else this time, please come forward. There you go.
Dawn Konikowski. And I'm sorry if I read from this, but I have trouble remembering everything I need to say, and that's why I read. But I do, after I read this little bit, I do just wanna address a couple of things that came up as far as 163 and a couple other matters. At our meeting yesterday, and again, thank you very much, we didn't agree on everything. We're asking for an administrative remedy for any aggrieved person that's affected by any administrative error of community development in their administration of the Land Development Code. Not for a neighbor that just has a gripe against somebody, but if there's actually an error that happens in their decisions, that we have a process where we can come to city council and have that error corrected without having to go to court. With all the confirmed discrepancies between the zoning map and the comprehensive plan text upon which the staff base their decisions, we could see that it would be almost impossible for Community Development Department to make administrative decisions day after day without possibly, without the possibility of making an error. I've reviewed the administrative appeals processes of other municipalities within the state of Florida. In the majority of the cases I had time to review, the regulations I found allowed for an administrative appeal for the property in question and also for affected persons owning property within anywhere from 300, 500 feet or within the area protected by the comprehensive plan. Or they were allowed, and they allowed an affected or aggrieved person to apply for a reconsideration or review by the city council of the administrative error. My concern, and the concern of many citizens, is that what is proposed does not offer all citizens equal protection from the potential effects of administrative errors, not administrative decisions, administrative errors concerning the Land Development Code. We understand that you want to keep speeding up process to attract new business to the city, but that expediency should not leave out equal protection from error for the residents who already live and pay taxes here. We feel that if we are aggrieved due to an administrative error by the Community Development Department in dealing with the Land Development Code, that there should be an administrative remedy for us as aggrieved persons to pursue. We should not have to spend $15,000 in court to correct an error that the Community Development Department may have made innocently. As a general rule, parties are required to pursue administrative remedies before resorting to courts to challenge an agency error. The exhaustion rule serves a number of policies, including promoting a factual record prior to court review, where there is no factual record when something is just administratively approved. And avoiding unnecessary judicial decisions by giving the agency the first opportunity to correct any errors and possibly moot the need for court action. A city will also become better informed on the effects of its staff and board's activities if it corrects its own errors. Contrary to what was put on the record today, under the Land Development Code 484, not 483 that they're proposing, 484, council does allow for any aggrieved person to submit a written request and supporting documentation for a rehearing of decisions. I have it here. If you can hand it out to everybody, please.
So they can review it while I'm speaking?
Sure.
Thanks.
So I can also review?
And supporting documentation for the rehearing of decisions. If the request is made by anyone other than the original applicant, the city must notify the applicant of the filing of the request for rehearing, and the applicant must be allowed to submit his independent written information.
I would ask if I could just finish.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. In rehearing, under 484, is for matters such as special exceptions and variances. They have already had two public hearings before seven council members. In 484, an aggrieved person other than the original applicant is permitted to ask for a rehearing. Therefore, it is lawful for someone other than the applicant to be afforded administrative remedies to correct errors prior to having to go to court. If there is an error in an, I'm sorry, an error by community development staff should have some similar remedy, administrative remedy for an aggrieved person when there is an error in any order requirement, interpretation, so on. We are asking that an aggrieved person, as defined in the Land Development Code in Chapter 4, be afforded equal protection to have a remedy that they can exhaust before city council, before having to take an action in court. We would request administrative remedy for any aggrieved person as defined in Chapter 4 definition, either under 483, have it covered under that, or under 484, to extend that to cover any errors in administrative decisions, as Collier County and many other municipalities allow. Under 163, 3215, it specifically states under number three and number four, if you look at it, I know you asked about it, it states that your only remedy is to go to court after you have exhausted your local remedies, if they are available. We're asking you to make them available. I'm sorry, I'm terrible at speaking. In fact, under Lee County, when this was moved over into our code, I thought we hadn't eliminated anything, but under 480, or 3484, as it existed when it was moved over, it specifically states in a couple items that are included on there, that it doesn't toll the time for 163, 3215, or 7051. So it definitely takes those into consideration when they wrote that. And I think that was it, I'm sorry. I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything. And the information that I put on the record earlier about section 4, 204, and 4, 3105, I would just like that reiterated now, I just don't wanna take your time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time on this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, here we are. Audrey, Counsel, Dawn has made, Ms. Konikowski, has made some points there. Do you have anything to say or anything, response?
Well, again, I would like to see or have additional research as far as communities that do allow third-party appeals, both I wanna see the text of that language before including modification, as well as seeing, you know, what kind of troubles those communities might have had with some of those situations by allowing it. I'm not necessarily adverse, I just have a problem with adding language that I haven't seen.
Exactly. But so far as the thing that she said about the rehearing process, this has to do with zoning cases, does it not?
It does. Zoning cases, it would be only things that come before council, whether it's a actual DRI, whether it's a DCI, which is major plan development, a special exception or variance.
And this is, but this is not applicable to appeals?
To administrative approvals.
Administrative appeals.
Correct.
Right there. And again, just to reiterate, the administrative appeal system never has, right?
That's correct. Now, the, I mean, the purpose of the rehearing is usually to find out that there was new evidence that was not available at the time of the hearing.
When it comes to this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, you have anything else to add?
No, I can go through the changes as I understand them.
Why don't you do that, and then we'll go back to counsel.
Okay. So the first change I have in the ordinance, and I'll be happy to take typos also, but starts on page six. This was one from the Benita Alliance. We'll change C to just read zoning verification letters. Okay? And it's taking out the language except when requested by property owner or agent of the land under question. D, there was some discussion of change, but to my knowledge, I have not been told to make that change.
Page what?
On page six. And that was, it states now, an administrative official's determinations or interpretations of state or federal statutes. It goes on. Former council member McCourt suggested removing "or interpretations." He had no problem with local government people making determinations, but he did have a problem with them making interpretations.
So it was between determination and interpretation?
He felt there was a very strong distinction between the two words, as far as making determination, which is probably the code saying, "Thou shalt not do something," very clear. Interpretation is somebody making application of what the, you know, how that reads.
John, do you mind saying determine instead of?
No, sir.
Okay, fine, let's put determine.
So we'll take out the...
Is that all right, Counsel? Put determination.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, so I will remove that. The next change that I have on this was a discussion by, I believe, the LPA. Let me just go through real quick.
Can you tell us what page when you find it?
I will. And it'll be on page 19, and it goes on to page 20. On this one, it was, the yellow language is what LPA had suggested, and that was to provide a posting along with a delay time on any administrative approvals. At this point, I do not know what council's consensus is on this. If you do go with placement of a posting of a sign, the intent was not for the sign to be posted for all administrative approvals, which would be sign proliferation, but for those that council designated as intense. And community development was to provide you with a list, you received it within their memorandum, so if you want to put consumption on premises, or, I don't know if you have any horticultural waste issues, anything that you can do administrative that you think they should have signed posting, you can do that if you wish, or you are to decide those.
Counsel, I would suggest that if you have, if you think something is worthy of posting or notification of particular, that it shouldn't be an administrative appeal.
Mayor.
And, yes.
What if we put it on the website for people to be able to view and have it just a, you know, boom, right over on the side that people can occasionally check in with? I don't know. I'd prefer a letter, but that's just me, I don't like signs.
Right now, what do you put on that, the list of things that you're looking at? Development orders is usually what you're putting on there?
Yes, sir. Well, you receive an email every night, and then we're working on better access for particular permits, but...
What does that report? We get a report every once in a while, that, you know, that says, okay, here's the things we're working on so far as development orders and that type of thing.
There's a daily report and a monthly report.
And it's available to whoever requests it, requests it, is it not?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can you do something with those more intensive uses to where you could include that? Is that, can you at least look into doing something like that?
If you would like, what I would be happy to do is to take a look at some of those uses that I think maybe you're inferring here and maybe bring back a particular process.
If you're considering a COP, you could put it on that list as well.
Yes, sir.
Right. He already does that. The question is, do you want to mandate that he does that for very intense uses? As well as, do you want an automatic delay time?
I don't know, maybe, if you make it a policy decision that you will put it on there and then all of a sudden you don't, and then you're in a situation where, whoops, you know?
No, I understand. Would you like me to bring something back to you, so that you have something specific to look at? I know right now we're talking about concepts.
So in concept, we can, we can have him take a look at that, and still approve this and come back and go ahead and insert that later? Can we do that?
Yes, I would suggest that you don't add any language at this time on it, and then add language later if you want to add that as an amendment.
Counsel, is that okay?
Mayor, yeah, I think the issue is transparency, so that the public knows what's going on and is concerned and can say, hey, I'm a neighbor who lives next door, could you like, make sure the light doesn't shine in my eyes? Or, you know, you can make sure it's limited to such and such, because it's really been a problem over here. I still would like to see COPs and, you know, to come before council, so.
And I wouldn't, actually, so we're gonna, we'll go around and around about that when that comes around.
Bars, nightclubs, it is, you know, a concern to people who live in the area, because they're not enforced at night. And to call the police, when you call the police, they don't know the zoning ordinance, they can't look it up. So that's the problem.
We are actually working on that.
Pardon me, sir?
We are actually working on that with them.
So you'll be able to have the zoning ordinances available for the police to look up, to say, they're only supposed to be open till 10, but they're staying open till 2?
I wouldn't count on something being in place before the end of the year, but shortly after that, we should have something.
Yeah, well, that'd be super awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, that would be nice to have some type of posting issue to where if the officer comes up there and it says, we're supposed to be closed by such and such time, and they're not, that'd be pretty simple, wouldn't it?
I think just about every, I think there's one exception, maybe two exceptions, but every other consumption permit.
Restaurant.
Same time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did I stay up that late in Benita?
Yeah, not me.
Two, yeah.
Okay, so we can, we can come back to that.
Okay, so I'm not putting in, I'm taking that out at this time.
For now, we're okay.
As to on-premises consumption, Ms. Konikowski had a suggestion of 500 feet on the map instead of just having it showing on the 8 and 11. Now, understand that under the code, they still have the requirements, this is just under the application. So, I mean, we still, staff still reviews it based on, there's different distance requirements for each different type of alcoholic beverage permit.
So there's a whole list of different requirements for the city?
Indoor, outdoor, is really the cutoff.
Counsel, again, my suggestion is if you wanna look at the way COP is handled, it's a broader subject than probably, than we're even talking about right tonight. If you want the COP thing brought back, we'll bring it back and take a look at that in its entirety. Yeah, I think you have to look at it collectively.
I think that's a good idea, Mayor, and not just to nip it here and nip it there, but see it comprehensively.
All right, why don't we leave it as way it is, and then we'll bring it back collectively?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, the next change is on 27, and I'm just deleting as is the undulating berm. Hopefully, I said that correctly. And that's on car lots. On the next one, deals with convenience food and gas stations, and is the canopies and accent bending. As I understand city council's consensus, on canopies, leave in the sentence that canopy lighting must comply with section 3-262 of the Land Development Code. And in accent bending, which is different than canopies, leave in that color accent bending on all structures, including canopies, is prohibited.
All right, Counsel, that's what we had come up with, right?
Yep.
Okay, good, carry on.
Okay. The next change I have is on page 30, on horticultural waste transfer sites, and the numbers, specifically first one is A, and take out, the un was actually taken out, but take out the incorporated area of the, and just go within the city, to make it simpler. And then also on B, change horticultural waste transfer sites limited to the storage of yard waste, taking out the shredding and composting of vegetative matter. And then later on, after going in, subject to residential setback below and appropriate development order approvals. Because there's different types of DO approvals, depending on what you're going for.
The storage, Mayor? It's supposed to be a transfer site, so can there be some kind of language on storage or to...
Why do we call it horticultural waste storage site?
Storage is defined in...
Transfer site.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on a second.
The definition you have in your Land Development Code simply states it being over 48 hours. I don't have it right in front of me, but the way we're using that term is consistent with your definition.
So when you use storage, it, there's a time limit to how long it can be stored there in a place? Because I remember when you had the other problem over there, you were after them to get it out of there in so many hours, right?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask another question? Can this be allowed in our commercial interchange?
It would be anywhere in a central service... It would be anywhere in Essential Services Facilities Group 2 by special exception.
Well, that's not what I'm asking. Specifically, can this be allowed in our commercial interchange?
I'm tempted to think any place.
It's not prohibited.
Yeah, well, that's-
It's got to be by special exception.
So, yes.
It's, it can be done if you allow it to be done.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, I would like to see maybe not in the commercial interchange, because do you really want to have people coming into your gateway looking at that? Not really, especially-
Is the commercial interchange within the corridor something?
Uh, yes, it is.
Portions of it.
Yeah, so it's not allowed there anyway?
Portions of it, but maybe not other portions of it. So, um, you know, I'm concerned that it could land there, and we, we have hotels and restaurants, you know, we're going to have nice, you know, something there, maybe hopefully someday, shopping, that we don't allow in the commercial interchange.
But that would have to come back to you as a special exception request, and council would have to say yes or no.
Oh, you can't put, horticultural site cannot be allowed in a commercial interchange? It says, special exception, IPD, CPD, you can't say prohibiting commercial interchange?
Well, we could say prohibited anywhere that is right now.
Because commercial interchange is, commercial interchange is a, a land use designation, is it not?
Correct.
No, it's a land classification in the comp plan.
Land class, okay.
Which makes it different. This is zoning, and the comp plan is different, but we could, you know, it would come to-
Did you figure that out?
Huh?
Did you figure that out to make it work right? I don't know how, how you would word that, so that it wouldn't be in our commercial interchange.
The commercial interchange, it would be a use that people could make application for, that you would have the ability, I mean, we could put special interchange corridor requirements.
Well, it, it's, it's already not allowed in the Benita Beach corridor, which, which encompasses most of, you know, a certain distance back, within the commercial interchange area.
If you're looking at keeping it out of the interchange, and we're given that direction, we can look at it, I'm not even sure if putting it in this section is the, the best way to handle that.
Yeah.
I think there could be better ways to address it.
Maybe better off in some other-
Yes, sir.
-area.
Yes, sir.
Maybe better off in the comprehensive plan.
That was one of my thoughts, yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't we look at that as a comprehensive plan change?
Yeah, how long will that take?
The definition of commercial, a long, shorter in this meeting.
I doubt that.
Are you guys getting it?
I got it.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we, that, let's make, put that on our to-do list, I don't think it's on fire yet.
Yeah, it might be.
Okay? Audrey, why don't you go ahead and carry on, please?
Okay. The next thing that I have in my notes, if I have anything else in my notes. I did not make the change as to the size of the parking lot, being the same measurement, I just, I thought it was done for consistency, but, but you're right, it's the same size. And that, there was a request as to look at Section 44, 4-3105 use permits, whether you wanted me to add a sentence, and we didn't discuss it other than a public comment, to make sure property is consistent with development order or building permit. And I think, I don't know if that's necessary, because the only reason you would get, the only reason we're adding it to zoning is we already have it in the building code section for building permits, and we have it, you know, for developments, and this would run concurrently with the development order if it was a new development order. So I'm not sure how to make a change.
What? So you, you think it's redundant to put it in here as well, is that what you're saying?
I think so, I'm looking at Community Development. The comment was to make sure the property, that staff, when issuing a use permit, make sure that the property is consistent with the development order or building permit.
Well, that's your job, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
I would hope so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, that was the only other comment I have, but I did not have text change.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. And the other one that was just pointed out to me was pet daycare, please keep that in front of me for a second?
200.
The 200 feet?
Okay. And that is the 200 feet.
Okay.
Can, can I ask about page 23 on our chart, on 4-653, shredding and composting of vegetative matter, by special exception only, right?
Only in AG1, it's not permitted in AG2 or AG3.
Or IPD or CPD?
Well, this is only the agricultural use table.
Thank you, yeah.
I think you have one Ag1 parcel within the city.
Which has it on it.
Okay. You have anything else? That was it? That's the end of it? Okay, all right. Do you want to have any other comments before we go to-
Oh, no, sir.
Counsel, any questions, anything else? Look, I mean, if, if you go to approve this, as usual, the journey with, or Chapter 4 never ends, it never will end. So I'm sure that there's things that we need to change, or we need to adjust, I think we're going to find that out in short order, the public is not bashful, and they will let us know. So, would you like to go ahead and go on with this?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Hi.
Councilwoman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Simons?
No.
Councilman Longheart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin?
Hi.
Councilman Slakta?
No.
So it does not pass. Is there another motion? Is there, are there other changes you would like to make? Okay, do you have instructions for, for staff?
Well, I think one of the concerns maybe, and I don't know, but would be to strike that section on the horticultural waste. I think there might be some insins, some concerns about this, I, I don't know, because I, I can't talk to you guys, but I think that's one.
So, okay, Counsel, talk to me, what don't you like? Stephen?
I'm still not comfortable with Attorney Dottie's concerns, has been, has been worked on.
This is your concern too?
That's one of my concerns.
Let's strike the entire section of horticultural waste and let them keep doing business the way they're doing?
Zippity-doodah.
For now, okay? Would you like to make a motion?
Just as a clarification?
Yes.
If you strike that, I believe you can strike the use table for agricultural, so we just take that completely out of this draft?
Yeah, go ahead. Hey, you made the motion, is there a second?
That was the only change.
Motion is second? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Hi.
Councilwoman Simons?
Hi.
Councilman Longheart?
Hi.
Councilman McIntosh?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilman Slakta?
Hi.
Mayor Nelson?
Hi. Okay, motion carries.
Break.
Okay, let's have a break now, since, since Steve is already out there, he beat us to the break there.
He's breaking.
Please be out here at 10 after 12.
We're going to continue on this ordinance.
Oh, you went first.
I beg your pardon?
I think you just passed an amendment.
You passed an amendment, you didn't pass the ordinance.
Correct.
You know what it is.
Well, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing.[1738.01]